Okay, Abel, we are now streaming live.
Hey, all right. Thank you so much, Susan. Welcome everybody to this work session for a regular meeting. We started a little early tonight in order to sort of review the document that Rob has put together following our meetings recently regarding goals and objectives. Hopefully, everybody's had a little chance to review that document. Rob, I didn't know if as part of this, you wanted to sort of walk us through that or how do you want to?
So I think it probably makes sense to just jump right in. The document that was delivered on Saturday, and I apologize, we've just been jamming on COVID vaccine stuff, which we have an update for you later on, but the document is basically a summary of the conversations that the council has had and contains a good bit of the old objectives and goals that that preexisted our discussions this year. So what I'm really looking for, because I don't expect the council to approve a set of goals and objectives until you're ready to do so. What I'd really like to do is just get sort of major objections, because at this point, we do have the budget coming out next Monday, and I want to be able to include at least a draft version of the goals and objectives. So if there was anything in that document that is completely off is just something that we don't even want to see published as part of the manager's proposed budget. We ought to know about that. We ought to. We ought to stop that now. So I'm happy to answer questions. I'm happy to pull up the document. I'm happy to proceed any way the council would like.
Yeah, how would folks like to take this? Would it be helpful if Rob had that document on the screen as a shared document, or can people sort of review it as as we go along here?
Yeah, Rob, let's pull it up. Let's go through it.
Yeah, I yeah, I have a copy in front of me, but I think if we go through it together up on the screen, that's helpful.
Very good. So there it is. I guess the the first sort of major change is that we've changed the town council goals and objectives acronyms, because some of the nomenclature has changed here. Education and training instead of education and communication facilities and infrastructure instead of core services. As we got into, you know, thinking about what we mean by core services, pretty much everything that is a core service is covered somewhere else, police services, you know, land use, transportation and safety. And really, what was left over is facilities. So we ended up with a facilities and infrastructure category, land use, housing, sustainability and natural resources, cultural priorities. This was one that had previously been much more about historic assets, physical assets. I think that this version of the document probably has a little bit more in terms of cultural services and and activities as opposed to just structures. Economic structure, that's a a different orientation as well, instead of economic development, really getting at the question, what kind of economy do we want to nurture and develop in this area? Not just, you know, develop anything, but what what is the characteristics? What are the characteristics of the economy that we'd like to encourage? Transportation traffic safe, traffic safe, not much different. Supporting vulnerable and underserved residents, the University of Rhode Island, South County Hospital, public safety and policing, civic engagement and public participation. So those are the categories that we've got at this point. I don't think there's anything there other than facilities and infrastructure that is different than what we discussed when last we met. Again, we've moved from core services because things like policing and and transportation and the other activities that we engage in are covered elsewhere, supporting vulnerable communities, etc. Was there any particular? Do we just want to go through the document? Straight through? I'm happy to do that.
As long as we think we have time to do, I guess that would be a sensible way to do it.
Okay. Nothing with regard to taxes and budget and management is much different than we talked about when last we met. Really, what's been fleshed out in this document versus what we talked about last time is the objectives. As Councilwoman Kelso noted, when it gets down to sort of the the nitty gritty, we really do need and did get input from the the town departments. So the objectives sort of flesh out the goals that were described in the last meeting.
One thing that struck me goals here. The second one. Taxes, tax increase should reflect inflationary influences. I agree with that in principle, but it would seem to preclude adding new programs or services. If I mean, because that's probably gonna make the budget rise faster than inflation. I don't know if there's a way to.
Yep. Quality of public services. Does that look?
Yeah.
All right. Moving on. All right, education and training. This is a large category in large part because there was quite a bit of discussion about the goals of the education program. When the school committee and the town council had their joint session back in December. These do reflect objectives articulated by the school committee. I didn't note any objections in that conversation, but certainly the first three, four, five are very much objectives that the school department has or goals that the school department has articulated. The next one, the faculty staff ratio should be appropriately appropriate to ensure really is a summary of conversations that have been had by the town council and the school committee. So for this session and going back for as many years as I've been here anyway.
One thing that I it could be either here or potentially with URI that I had brought up at the goals and objectives work session was working or at least facilitating communication between URI and the schools. Hopefully, take advantage of their you know, their teaching resources, maybe we could have a specific objective of now establishing a mentorship program between college students at URI and in the local schools.
I'm going to stick that unless you have any objection in the URI section in part because I want to be able to deliver a discrete section to URI so that they know what we're looking to do as well.
I think that's funny.
So it's funny switch to. What are we saying? Facilitate. And then the specific and objective in the near term, Abel, I'm sorry.
I thought that the, you know, the mentorship program, if we could try and I we can hammer out details after this. You don't need to word smooth it really. But yeah, you are between URI and the schools.
All right. Facilities and infrastructure.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Going back to that faculty and staff to student ratio should be appropriate to ensure that second sentence, while every community is different, decisions about South Kingstown's ratios should be informed by comparisons to other communities. Can we change that to other like communities? I think it's important to yeah, on note that every community is different. We don't want to compare ourselves to to a community that looks nothing like the makeup of South Kingstown. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Infrastructure and facilities. This is the first one is sort of all encompassing. It's all of the things that that we think are the the critical things. And then the second is really the equipment or spaces necessary to make those things happen. Really, this one is all in the objectives. This is where the rubber hits the road on on goals and objectives in a lot of ways. So it's the seawall. John's actually got some some edits that he sent over today, but they don't change the substance of this. The relic wall discussion, we have, by the way, heard back from Kevin Finnegan. He has put a number to his contribution, so we are proceeding with that joint partnership. The number as last I heard it was 295, but we are still discussing with him what that what the context of that is so that we understand the total offer. Planned infrastructure improvements to the Neighborhood Guild. Marina Park Boat Ramp Reconstruction. Recycling receptacles at the municipal parks. This has actually been a big issue, not just in the parks. And we're going to have to address trash somehow, some way in the next year or two. We have a lot of, we're going to hear about that tonight when we start talking about parking spaces down on Green Hill Beach Road. Trash is becoming a townwide challenge. Network at Noise Farm, we will have a chance tonight to talk about a property and we'll talk a little bit about Noise Farm because we have a property that is in contemplated to be sold by the town adjacent to Noise Farm. Town Beach Pavilion issue, Sogatucket Park improvements. The fire alarm box conversion project should be completed within the next year, year and a half. I want a townwide facilities condition report. We've never done an inventory of the condition of all our of our buildings. We had, as you know, Jacob's engineering come through and do all of the school buildings in the state of Rhode Island, they assigned a condition number to each of those buildings. We've been working on developing a method for coming up with the same sort of description of where our buildings are in terms of their useful life and the cost of bringing them to full full value, but we haven't haven't succeeded in doing that. I'd like to get that done in the next year.
All right, Rob, can I jump in again here?
Please.
I know we're going to hear about this tonight, but would this be an appropriate time to say that I would like to add providing trash receptacles where there are public rights away?
Yes, I'm happy to set that as an objective if that's the council's objective. The council has to sort of know that there's a real financial impact to deciding to do that. So if that is the council's objective, and that really is a decision the council is going to have to make. Yeah, I mean, that's certainly something we could do.
Yeah, I would just like to start that conversation and maybe try to get that ball rolling. Thanks.
Let's use. This is, I think, a fair summary of the conversation that was had at the last workshop or work session on goals and objectives. The comp plan is actually almost done. He had one sort of hanging graphical problem as of this afternoon, and Jamie's around, we'll get him to report on that during the manager's report. But that report should be ready for production either tonight or tomorrow. We may have to change that date to the 23rd. The March 2023, a community wide survey to be undertaken, seeking input for future development redevelopment park recreation programs and facilities to meet the current needs. We haven't done that sort of survey in South Kingstown in a while. And it is, it's a good thing to do every once in a while to get a feel for what people, excuse me, what people really want to see in the recreational and open space inventory. I I think that it's time to do that survey again, and there's no reason we can't do it, particularly if we do it as an online survey. We can design a fairly tight survey that requires people to sort of not come back and and fill out the form more than once so that we don't get skewed results. We should be able to design a fairly tight online survey form. Housing, these were the
Sorry, just one sec. So I'm, I think a survey is a great idea, but one thing that sticks in my mind is there's 2,900 residents that are over 75 and you know, people don't just stop being active at age 75 and just roll off into the dark. So how are we going to reach? How would we reach them? Because, you know, a number of them obviously don't have computers, don't have emails. We know all this from from COVID, so how will we reach at least 10% of our population?
So it's also the case that we have snowbirds and we have folks who aren't, we're finding this with COVID vaccines too. We have folks who aren't necessarily here during certain parts of the time. We're just going to have to design it right so that we don't end up with a survey that is skewed in those in those ways. I haven't designed a survey. I haven't this survey. I haven't, you know, decided how this will look. What I know is that we need to do a survey. We haven't designed it, but your point is well taken.
Just can't, you can only, you cannot only do an online survey. Some people don't do online.
Yep. Fair enough. Housing, the town council believes that clean, safe and affordable housing is a human right. That's a pretty bold statement, but I think that's what I've heard the council essentially stay stating a responsibility for protection of this right is shared by individuals, the community and municipal state and federal government agencies consistent with this purposeful growth land use model. South Kingstown will maintain an adequate inventory of low and moderate income rolling into the state objective of 10%. And the housing types will be varied and aesthetically pleasing. That's an addition to this that I'm not sure we talked about, but I think it's implicit in the conversations that I've heard the planning board and council members articulate.
So for that goal and objective, the second one, the town will meet the statutory requirement. There's no way we're going to do that in two years. I think it needs to say like me, you know, make progress towards because
we're at 5.6. If we want to, we want to target a number. I can, I can come back with a number that is achievable, but this is not, this also isn't a two year goal. Remember, goals are not are not the two year things. The goals are that 10 and 15 year thing. The objectives are the two year thing. The goals are the things that the town wants to have achieved in the long run. The objectives are the things that the town will achieve in the next year or two. Goals are long term and objectives are more immediate. So I could change this number. If we change this number, we will be telling the state that we don't mean to hit 10% or that we're just going to give it a good try.
I then I think the verbs need to change then. If I can jump in too, I I think having a number will hold us accountable, and I think that that should be done to some extent. So can we look at this a little more closely?
Yeah, what I would suggest is that the goal really is to achieve the state objective. That is the town's goal. It's, I'm sorry, that's our goal is to achieve the the state's number.
I think it should, it should say work will will work to meet the state requirements for affordable housing in our community. So then you get rid of the percentage. I mean, we all know what the law is. We have to work towards that. It doesn't say that.
Yeah, so
me, I thought, because the goals are, it says in the save document, 2020, 2022. And a lot of these things are date sensitive. I think it's
No, only objectives are date sensitive. Goals are not date sensitive. You'll note that there aren't any honor befores in our goals.
Okay.
One way to do this would be to leave that our goal, our long term goal is to maintain is to achieve the 10%.
Yes.
We put an objective in that has an appropriate number for the next two years. Our goal is to go from 5.6 to 5.8 within the next two years.
Yeah, our goal is to meet the state requirements regarding affordable housing in our community, even taking out the percentages because not that it not that it will change. It hasn't changed in 15 years, but something like that just seems to me, I felt like it's a little too specific there. But it's not that I don't think that we need to be working towards it.
That was a preexisting goal. That's not one that that was added this year, so I appreciate.
I just don't want to have something in there that they say, well, that was your goal and you didn't do any, you know, you're still, you're at 5.6 still.
Well, yes, but again, that doesn't get to Jess's point, which is if we're going to have something in our objectives, we should have something that is measurable too. And that should be a 5.6 to a 5, something north of 5.6, something closer to 5.8, I imagine.
So that, so that makes me wonder about the Affordable Housing Plan that we're supposed to have on file with the state, which I've learned that we don't have. You know, from attending planning board meetings, it's an issue. Two things are obviously hurting us, not having an approved comprehensive plan. And again, not having an affordable housing plan, so we need to make sure that those are those are objectives that get done. Obviously, the comp plan is going to get done, but where is that other document? I don't have the right command of the vocabulary of that, the Affordable Housing Plan that's due to the state, I guess.
And Susan, while while we're on this, if Jamie's in the audience, it might make sense for him to be pulled in so he can talk to that because I'm not sure of the distinction between the comp plan and this, which I think may be a component of the comp plan, but
Yeah, just we're, we've got about five minutes left for this exercise. If we want to stick to the seven o'clock start for the
So
I have brought Jamie in.
Okay.
If you want him in now.
Jamie, very quickly, you just heard that concern. What can you tell us very quickly about the Affordable Housing Plan to be approved by the state?
I think an objective would be that the town update their existing housing plan and this coming fiscal year and keep it broad. That's our goal. Because again, I don't think you need to read an entire plan. I think you need to look at the existing plan and update it.
And that's a plan filed with who?
Yes. I just did a, I just wrote a research paper on this whole topic. That's why.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Jamie. Sustainability, natural resources. Was there anything here that struck? Cultural priorities. Did I miss anything here that had been discussed?
Sorry to go back to it, but for affordable housing, maybe we could have an objective of, I know we just got a request to meet with the Housing Authority Board, maybe annual meetings with the Housing Authority.
Yes, that's a good one. Is is annual frequent enough? Or do we want to, because I feel like there are some concerns and we've heard from various stakeholders in and out of the community. Do we need to do something more more regularly rather than meet annually? Because regularly could be annually, but then it, yeah. Yeah, there you go.
All right. Anything on cultural priorities that I've missed? All right. Economic structure. This is where we got some of the particular sectors discussed.
Yeah, and here is where another one where this could be here or URI, but we talked a bit about sort of development landing development around URI, West Kingston area, trying to you know, make land available for or taking advantage of the research that's going on at the school.
Yes, I've I've actually included it here and URI as a goal. But we haven't got a specific objective here. We haven't, we haven't said how we're going to operationalize that goal. So that that is an open, that is an open issue.
Can we go back to the land use? Because I don't know if we talked about Route 108 as an old tower. We talked about Old Tower Hill Road, but we didn't talk about going back to 108 in the Special Management District is an objective. We kind of, I think, we rushed through this section because we were going to meet with the planning board and in two days later, so but we never got to it in that work session. So I don't, I don't want to rush through it because we're going to skip over 108.
What's the thought on 108?
I think the planning board needs to look at Route 108, Special Management District, and make some recommendations and some changes because I think there's some concern about sprawl. I just don't want to rush.
I have exact language stating comprehensive community plan.
Very good.
Get it to the council.
Work for my note. Okay. Economic structure, transportation and safety, public safety services should be frequent enough. This is really this is really the ride question. Transit services should be frequent enough and conveniently located so residents and visitors can access essential services such as grocery stores, pharmacies, medical offices and central business districts. Again, this is a goal. This is not not likely, we're not likely to get ride or the transit authority to get this going in the next couple of years, but it is certainly something that we've heard for a long time, and we do need to continue to focus on. The, starting up our services for residents 60 and older. We do have the objective of getting back on We do have the objective of getting back on online with that as soon as we can.
All right. At this point, we've gotten beyond seven o'clock. So I just want to ask if there's items that people had like listed down that they wanted to see in this document.
So Abel, I just have a question. We can revisit this at any time, correct?
I mean,
Yes. I am going to publish in the manager's proposed budget a draft. It will be labeled draft. It will not be labeled council's objectives. It will be draft council objectives based on work sessions. It will not be your final work product. It could be done with the budget, though. It should be. You should have your goals and objectives spelled out as part of the budget document in April.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
We don't. We don't have to go through it now, but is there a section on community community communication and the app and looking for ways to engage? I know it's in the last section, but I didn't get there. I was writing a research paper, so.
Yes, there is. Yep. And obviously, any additions or changes the council would like will make those.
We're not approving this tonight, so we can look at it again.
That's right. All right. I'm gonna close that out. I'm gonna stop sharing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Rob, and we can come back to that at a later date. Right now, we do have a couple interviews tonight for the Assessment Board of Review. I believe we have two folks who want to be reappointed. First, I see Brad Hevner, the tenet. If you can bring him in.
Hi.
Hello, Brad. Thank you for coming tonight for the interview.
Thanks for having me.
And thank you for your service up to this point. Why don't you tell us a bit about your experience, why you would like to be reappointed, and what you hope to see happen there?
Yeah, well, sure. I've served now, I think, for around eight or nine years on the Assessment Board as the alternate. I was appointed, I think, at the same time as David Bod, who you're also interviewing tonight, who is a permanent member of the of the commission. I um I am a real estate appraiser by trade. I've been an appraiser for 16 years. I've worked in private practice. I'm currently working as an appraisal reviewer for a bank. So and my practice has always been skewed more towards commercial real estate. I'll say just something really nice about the team. We have the four individuals who've been working on the Assessment Board of Review. We have a commercial appraiser, residential appraiser. We have a builder and we've always had someone involved in real in real estate brokerage and sales. That was Mark Arsham, but most recently, but currently Ken Monroe. So we have I think the way that our board is constituted, it's it's it kind of covers all the bases and has a lot of professional expertise. So as the alternate, I'm pulled in often because of my commercial expertise. If we have commercial commercial appeals tend to be of pretty significant consequence to the tax base in South Kingston. So I'm often pulled in as needed to help out with with those and kind of lend my expertise to those those particular cases. I've enjoyed the service. It's I think that Assessment Board is it's hard work. People have strong opinions about property values and about taxation, and it's important to have a board that's that's experienced, but also fair to the to the property owners in this town, the taxpayers in this town. And I think that's what I've been a part of for the last eight or nine years, just giving people a fair shake to feel like they've been listened to and they have the opportunity to make their case to share their concerns to a group of people that are that will listen to them. And I think that we've all done that really well. And, you know, we've 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 talked to the accessories, made corrections as a as a result of these appeals on a number of occasions. So that's because there's some of my thoughts, a little unfocused, but I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Any other questions for Brad?
I do. May I? Are there any other boards and commissions you would might want to serve on? I know you say you like this one, but are there any other places your talents could be used?
Um, I mean, I think that this is one that's pretty uniquely kind of squarely in my wheelhouse, seeing as I do real estate valuation every day in my job. I like to be civically engaged and I am interested. I like, you know, part of the reason that I serve is because I love the town I live in and I want to give back. And this is a place where I can I feel like I can use my my experience and my talents to give back. Back, I think in 2012, there was one, there was a vacancy that was awarded to David Bod, and I was kind of put on as the alternate. And at the time, they suggested economic development committee or some other committee. This is this is a really good fit for me, but I'm if I'm happy to, you know, to serve anywhere there might be room for me. I, yeah.
If I could follow up on that question, I was gonna ask it because we have gotten a number of communications from the zoning official and people concerned that we're at risk of losing our quorum on the zoning board. And I know it's a it's a it's a lot of responsibility to be on the zoning board, but would you be able to be pressed into service there eventually?
It's a possibility. I mean, I think there's a lot of a lot of a town's businesses kind of centered on real estate and economics. And so planning, zoning, things like that are things that I deal with every day as well. I understand zoning. I've read zoning codes in all of the municipalities and in this state. So that I mean, it's not directly in my wheelhouse like like property valuation is, but seeing as how I, you know, I'm an alternate here on this on on this board. So I'm not, you know, I'm not always up at the plate, I guess, so to speak, but I'd be happy to consider it. It's the first time really giving it some thought.
Right. Thank you. I appreciate all the baseball references. Any other questions for Brad?
Yeah, that's 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 a little gratuitous. I but it's, you know, spring training is starting, I think. So maybe it's on. It's on my brain. Springtime coming.
All right. Well, I don't see any further questions for you, Brad. If we do force you on to zoning board, I apologize in advance.
Let me know. Yeah.
And we definitely appreciate all the service that you've given to the Assessment Board so far. We'll let you know shortly.
Yep, I appreciate it. Thanks, everybody.
And could we bring in David? All right, David, you are in the meeting now. We just need you to unmute yourself. And if you'd like to be seen, of course.
Yes. Me okay now?
Yes, we can. Welcome. Thank you for for your service to the town on the Assessment Board. You want to be reappointed. Tell us why, what your experience has been like on the board and what you hope to continue doing there.
Um, well, I think I've been on there now for about eight years and we have a really good board. I mean, I was listening to Brad chat a little bit about, you know, the makeup of the board and a lot of his comments, they're all true. We, you know, I'm I feel, you know, being a builder in town and I've lived here all of my life, I'm I can I understand what's going on in town and I have a kind of a handle on the real estate evaluations, not as much as the the real estate guys on the board and the appraisers, but I just feel, you know, that I I'm a good I'm a good part of I'm a I'm a good part of the board and can offer a valued opinion. And I the other thing I like about it, quite frankly, it's not a lot of time on to the point in my life right now where I still want to serve in South Kingston. However, I, you know, I was on the planning board for 10 years but quite a few years ago, and it was very enjoyable. And, you know, at this point in my life, I like serving and I like this. I like the Assessment Board because it's it's not a big commitment. And, you know, I can easily fit that in my schedule. So that's that's about it. Does anybody else have any questions?
I sense that you're you were seeing that next question coming.
Yeah. Michael, like I know Michael from from those days in the planning board. So I kind of miss it, but I don't miss it that much. And I I'm happy to be serving on this board, like I said, because of the the time commitment that, you know, that it takes.
I appreciate that. Any other questions for David? All right. Well, again, thank you for coming tonight and for for all your service. We will let you know.
Okay, thank you very much. Very, very much appreciated.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And I think those were the two interviews for tonight. I didn't miss any, right? Okay, let's go through the agenda then.
All right. Actually, I just closed the window that had my agenda in it. So Susan, do you have the agenda up? While I get it going here. If anybody has any questions about the agenda, we can answer those first. And by the time we've answered those, I should be back to the screen.
Any questions for Rob? The agenda.
All right, going through the agenda. The two big items tonight, we think, will be the time consumed, yeah, time consuming items are the public hearing. Well, let's back up. We have a public hearing that is non-controversial. We have a public hearing to change the elderly tax abatement. This changes the salary levels at which the exemptions kick in. I believe the council has received this afternoon, Jean, when he prepared the table mistakenly put the tax credits in the far right column that relate to the previous year, not not the current year, but rather last year's tax credits. Those have been adjusted in the in the email that you've received. They're up by about $100 from what they were at the top end. And then, you know, it's a percentage from there on down. Last year, the council made a 5% increase in the credits that were available but did not change the income brackets. This year, the recommendation is to change the income brackets but to leave the credit as it is. What we're trying to do here is we're trying to ratchet the income levels and the credits to get to inflationary increases, which really haven't been done since 2009. So we're really trying to make up for a lot of lost time on the value of these credits and the value of incomes. So this year, we're doing income. Last year, we had done the tax credit. If we don't see any negative impacts from this adjustment, then we will, you know, continue with the program alternating until we get to a more equitable and balanced, more inflationary, adjusted both tax credit and income bracket. The question was asked at the last meeting, you know, do we know what this is going to cost? And the answer is, we don't. We don't track the income of individuals by address except through this program. So if you're not currently in the program, we have no way of knowing that you're newly eligible. There's no way to know how many folks will be captured by the new income bracket. So it's a bit of a bit of a guesswork exercise. We're doing this in a way that we think will have no, you know, big surprises for us as we go forward. The next public hearing is the parking public hearing. We've gotten a number of correspondence, a number of letters from residents and non-residents. This is likely to be a well-attended public hearing. And there are a number, as I say, of items that have come in over the last week or so. We then have a discussion of the snow removal ordinance and sidewalk policies. We're happy to have staff walk you through what the current ordinance is, what our policies are, and have the council engage in a full discussion of what they'd like to see. And if you'd like to invite members of the public to comment on that, you, of course, have the opportunity to do so at this point. Or you could wait and do it. We have a number of correspondents that deal with snow removal as well. I will note that we have gone out and sort of relooked at what the universe of snow removal or sidewalk shoveling policies are. And I think it's fair to say that there's really only five regimes out there. There's the do nothing, you know, no penalties, no fines, no, no requirement, and don't worry about it. There's penalties or fines for not shoveling. The responsibility is put on property owners. That's very common. There are some communities that have full snow removal, and those fall into basically three regimes. The first one is sort of characterized by Rochester, New York, which will shovel every sidewalk in the city of Rochester, New York, if there are four inches of snow or more. Town employees go out and shovel every sidewalk in town, but again, only if there's four inches or more. Burlington, Vermont, another heavy snow accumulation location does remove the snow from every sidewalk in Burlington, but they do it after they've finished doing the roads. So it's quite often the case that sidewalks don't get done for a couple of days by town public works personnel. And then the third regime is another snow belt community, communities, actually Minneapolis and St. Paul have an ordinance that requires that property owners remove snow from their adjacent sidewalks. But if the property owner fails to do so, then the city or cities will go in and remove the snow and fine the property owner, essentially recapturing the cost of of the snow removal for those who did not do as they were obliged to do under the Minneapolis or St. Paul ordinance. That's essentially our model here under the current ordinance. And I'll review that again. I just wanted to share with you that those are sort of the the five schemes that exist out there.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, but we we kind of flew right by. I had a question about the parking at Green Hill because I just was curious how this came to be. So what was the impetus for changing the parking? Did somebody come forward? Did somebody? And what's the process for doing it? Because I get that it's obviously there's people who are upset based on the emails, but I'm just curious. How did we decide that we were going to expand the parking there?
Sure. Three citizens came to the town, I don't know, about four, five, six months ago, several months ago, probably close to six months ago, and requested that additional parking be made available on that section of the road. It was a request by three citizens.
So did the council, did the council? Did it come before the council and the council sent this forward or did it come to your office?
The initial request came in as a verbal request. I went down. John Shock went down. Abel actually went down. We met with the three citizens on site. A request was written and sent to the town council. The town council reviewed that request, asked that the ordinance be amended. The amendment was done by the police department. The amendment was noticed for the public hearing and we are at the public hearing.
I must have missed that part months ago.
Unless there are any correspondence that anyone has any particular questions on, I don't recall anything that was that jumped out at me as being particularly non-self-explanatory. New business, George Washington Day. Today is George Washington's birthday. Actually, I learned something this past week. It's George Washington's revised birthday. He was actually born under the Julian calendar and his birthday on under the Julian calendar was February 11th, but when the Georgian calendar was adopted, it shifted his birthday to the 22nd. The easement is one that is necessary, uh, C, um, 15C is an item that's necessary in order for us to, uh, construct the AT&T tower behind the, uh, police station.
And the other question, sorry, I had about the, the tax abatement, um, credit for si- incomes. Could we get like, uh, a, additional column, like where would it be? Like, what's the goal? Like if it, if, what's the delta between now and where you want it to be? Like, or I'm not quite sure this is a your project or a council and, and identified initiative.
So it's not a my project. Um, this has been a topic of discussion for several years. This item first came up because, uh, the tax assessor had noted that it had been quite some time since there had been an adjustment. Uh, a memo was written to the council and direction was given to, uh, begin to address that issue. A column, we could produce in a memorandum, a, a third column, which would tell you what inflation would be over that period of time.
Well, I guess, I guess I'm trying to figure out, like, if, if we could magically fix it in a year, what, what are we, what, what, what should it be if we could?
Yeah.
So that I would, you would sort of know, like, we're this far off or we're not this far away from it. It's just, I'm just curious to see, you know, like you said, it's going to take a number of years, but if we had a magic wand, what would it be in a year?
Mm-hmm. So if, if we take just as a thumb, you know, a thumb, uh, rule of thumb kind of thing, two percent inflation over, uh, it's been twenty years, uh, two percent and not quite, it's been 2009, it's been 10. Yeah. So we're really talking about, twenty percent increase. If thirteen sixty is the low end, twenty percent of that would be another twenty-six hundred dollars on the, on the lowest income bracket. What that does in terms of impact, we wouldn't, I, I, I can't tell you because I don't know what the difference is in the population between those who have twenty, thirty, thirteen, six, and those who would have, um, sixteen, two. I, I just don't know. So the target though is to come to level with what inflation would have been if you had been doing a cost of living adjustment since 2009. That's the policy objective that was articulated.
Okay, I, I understand. I'm just look, I'm looking at my other screen, just trying to.
Yep. So the two, the two things that were never adjusted are both the income brackets and the amount of the credit. And they both would be, it would have been eroded at the same rate of inflation over that, uh, 2009 to 2021 period.
I guess I'm just trying, I think what's confusing to me is if you're, if you're constantly increasing the income, aren't you changing? If you keep increasing what the income areas are, why would you do that in the first place? Because you could just change the credit if you, and why, why alternate the changing? I guess that's my question.
Well, again, because both factors have been eroded over time. So thirteen thousand, six hundred dollars in income is worth less today than it was in 2009. And twenty-one hundred dollars is worth less today than it was in 2009. Both of those things need to be income adjust, uh, uh, inflation adjusted. If you're doing a cost of living, you would adjust both of those things. You would adjust both the qualification number, because the number is just higher today than it was then. And you'd adjust the credit number because the value is lower today than it was then. So as you adjust those things, you're, you're really changing the program's cost. But because we have no good way to measure particularly the change in the brackets, we have a pretty good measure of what the change in the credit is because we know who exists at the old bracket numbers. They're already participating in the program. But as we change the brackets, we have less certainty about the impact. We, we're sort of trying to do these things in a way that, that steps them up so that we don't end up with a surprise. If we were to adjust everything all at once, we could have some net significantly, the twenty-one hundred would be, uh, what is that? Oh, twenty-five hundred roughly, um, and the, um, number of people, because we'd be going from thirteen, six to sixteen, two, might be some net significantly more, getting more in terms of credit. We just can't, we just can't tell what that impact is going to be. So if we ratchet it up slowly, rather than doing it all at once, then if we have a reason to slow the policy or, or reconsider the policy or reevaluate what we're doing, we have the time to do it. We haven't frustrated would-be participants. We haven't, we haven't done, you know, harm to the, the would-be participants.
I, I understand. I, I'll, I'll call you about it because you probably need to explain it again and again, one more time to me, but I thank you.
All right, um, and then I'm going to just close with the close executive session, uh, coming up in seven thirty. The close executive session, uh, is the, the subject of this is that parcel of land off of Stony Fort Road, Anderson, worse, uh, versus Wojcikowski. We will have some discussion and I, uh, tonight, we did go back and investigate. This property is adjacent to, um, Noise Farm. Uh, so we do have a public park that is adjacent to this parcel, um, which, you know, has some implications for the park. I've asked Terry and, um, Jamie Rabbit to join us tonight to talk about the, the implications. Noise Farm is, uh, two hundred and fifty acres. This is eleven acres. Um, it's not particularly, well situated. It's not like we could put parking on this or anything like that. So, um, its impact and value to the park is in addition to the park is limited, uh, but it's not non-existent. Uh, and, um, I've asked Jamie to look and will, he'll describe some of the, uh, impediments to development of the site as well. So we will go into executive session and talk about that.
Great. Uh, thanks, Rob. Any, uh, last, uh, questions for Rob on the agenda tonight? I note that we're, uh, looking at the, uh, emergency order again. Know that, uh, there's been some movement potentially on, you know, you know, people indoors, meeting, uh, maybe we can, and maybe not this time, but, but talk about getting back to in-person meetings.
Yeah, we were, we've started the conversation in, uh, Town Hall about opening up the doors to the public again. It, it's definitely, as we come into spring, we're going to have fewer of the challenges we've had during the winter. So it may be time, it's getting close.
All right, it is seven twenty-nine, so if, uh, probably everything's ready for the beginning of the meeting anyway, but, uh, let me know if not.
No, you're all set.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Colin. All right, it is seven thirty, so I want to welcome everybody to this meeting of the South Kingstown Town Council. It is Monday, February twenty-second. I am at seven thirty. Our first order of business is the pledge to the flag. Uh, Susan, if you would please lead us in that, that would be very great.
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. And, uh, will you please take the role?
Council President Collins.
Here.
Council Vice President McIntyre.
Here.
Councilwoman Bergner.
Here.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Here.
Councilwoman Rose.
Here.
All members are present.
Great. Uh, item four is a special one tonight. Uh, it's the presentation of the 2020 Regional EPA Wastewater Treatment Plant Operation and Maintenance Excellence Award. Uh, I'm not sure exactly who is on our list, but if we can, uh, Justin, compare, we can bring him in. And if, uh, we have any members of, uh, the wastewater treatment staff who are here to, um, I don't know, speak about, um, their work or, uh, accept the award, that would be great to have them. Or maybe, uh, John could be brought in.
And Susan, I do believe John's got, uh, someone from wastewater.
Hello, can you see me and hear me now?
Yes, we can. Welcome, Justin.
Thank you, everyone. Um, do I have the go-ahead here? Sorry, I was, uh, taking a little bit to rejoin and go through the streaming. Are we good to go?
Justin, just one second. John, is there anyone else to bring in?
Uh, Kathy is not well, but Rick Emery may be out there in cyberspace. Rick's the Assistant Wastewater Superintendent.
I'm not seeing him in the list of attendees.
Okay, so I, I'd say let's proceed.
Justin, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Good evening, uh, members of the Town Council, Town Manager, residents of the town of Kingstown. My name is Jay Pampari. I'm the Regional Pretreatment Coordinator at EPA New England. And it's an honor to be here this evening to present one of EPA's Regional Wastewater Excellence Awards. Just to put this into perspective, there are five hundred and nineteen wastewater treatment plants in all of New England, which we oversee. And this year, only three of those treatment plants were actually award-worthy and received awards. Uh, and this was the only, uh, this along with, um, Block Island was the only other, actually the treatment plant operator in Block Island also received an award, uh, but not for operation maintenance at the treatment plant. But our awards program was developed over thirty years ago in order to recognize the wastewater treatment plant, uh, staff and for the dedication and commitment to protecting water quality in our environment. Most people who are not in this field, uh, never think twice about what happens at the treatment plant or the work that's performed by these dedicated individuals and keeping human health and the environment safe, uh, where resources are often limited. Many conscientious operators and treatment plant staff continue to form, uh, perform exceptionally with little to no fanfare. So because of that, we created our awards program as an approach to increase the public awareness and recognize the contributions made by the recipients, all the while encouraging public support of their efforts to improve water quality and public health. I want to thank Bill Patnold and his staff at the Rhode Island Department of Envir- uh, Environmental Management for the nomination, uh, of the town for this year's award. Among many other things, the state inspections routinely found a well-maintained treatment plant facility, a sign of community commitment from the decision-maker level to plan operations and mechanics down. I also want to recognize the superintendent of the treatment plant, Kathy Perez, uh, and her staff, who unfortunately, uh, could not make it, uh, this evening. I hope she's feeling better for all of the outstanding work they've done over the years. As far as some of that work goes more specifically, during a time of upgrades, including a primary clarifier and generator and training new staff members, the treatment plant staff managed and executed plant processes while remaining in compliance all the way, all the while. There'll be more recognition that's up and coming. I was told any day now that the formal press release will be finalized and published on EPA's website. Once that is, I will certainly send that over to you so you can forward that for circulation. Uh, I'm extremely grateful for the opportunity to prevent this, to present this award tonight for the town. I'm sorry that we couldn't do it live and in person. So on behalf of EPA, I would like to recognize, uh, Kathy Perez, all the treatment plant staff in the town of Kingstown tonight for, uh, and virtually present you with this year's EPA Wastewater Treatment Plant Operation and Maintenance Excellence Award. And I know that you already have one at the treatment plant, but I'm going to virtually present this over to you, John. If you want to take this, uh, and put this on the wall somewhere, that would be great. So thank you, everyone.
I got it. Tha- thank you, Justin. I don't know if I could add much more than you already have, other than saying we do have a very dedicated, uh, superintendent, assistant superintendent and treatment plant staff of the entire staff. It is a team effort and they're, they're very conscientious of what they do every day.
It's a well-deserved award and it, just because the state nominates you doesn't mean you're actually, uh, receiving an award either. All of the award nominations have to undergo a rigorous EPA enforcement screening. We look at compliance history, et cetera. Make sure there are no violations at the wastewater treatment plant. And I would say probably half of those awards get thrown out, but, uh, the town's award went straight through. And again, congratulations to Kathy and her staff, John, Rick, everyone in the town, and thanks for continuing to support the wastewater treatment plant, uh, and protecting water quality. So congratulations again.
Justin, thank you. I, I, I will note, and, and you can tell folks back in your office, we regularly plan visits, site tours for the, uh, Town Council so that they can actually see the operation for themselves. Uh, the community really does take this very seriously.
Excellent. Job well done. Keep up the great work.
Thank you. And I don't believe we have to take any, uh, official action here. So, uh, we'll just, uh, send our congratulations along to the whole team. Thanks, John and Kathy and everybody else.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Justin.
Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, and that brings us to item five on the agenda, uh, the approval of minutes of previous meetings.
Rory McIntyre, I'll make a motion to approve five, A, B, and C.
Jess Rose, I'll second that.
We have a motion from Councilman McIntyre, second from Councilwoman Rose. Uh, any discussion? Is there anyone opposed? Right, that motion carries unanimously. Uh, that brings us to item six, the consent agenda.
Rory McIntyre, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Jess Rose, I'll second.
Motion by Councilman McIntyre, second by Councilwoman Rose. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? Right, that motion carries unanimously. And that brings us to item seven, licenses. Seven A is a resolution granting a holiday sales license to low tide jewelry of ten seventy, Kingstown Road, Building Nine, Unit two oh two of Wakefield. Uh, application by Paula Quigley. Is Paula in attendance?
Bringing her in right now.
Thank you.
Hello.
All right, Paula, looks like you're in the meeting. You just need to unmute yourself. Uh, if you see that little microphone button down there in the bottom left hand.
Hello.
Hi, Paula.
Hi.
And if you do want to be seen, you can click on that little, uh, there you are. Welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, so, uh, you, uh, would like, uh, this, uh, holiday sales license? Tell us a little bit about low tide jewelry.
Okay, I make, um, sea glass jewelry and, um, beach stone jewelry by hand, and I've been doing it for quite some time. And I have kind of a bit of a Facebook following, so I was looking for a place to meet up with customers and be able to do ring sizes, ring sizings and things like that. And I, um, approached Palisades, been, they said they had a rental. And I was originally going to just kind of do a little workshop there, but he said that I might be able to do the retail as well, which it's a great spot for that. So, um, I used to have a shop on Block Island, so I had a little bit of experience. So I thought I would give it a shot in, um, South Kingstown and see what I could do. So.
Well, I just wanted to thank everybody for joining us.
Any, uh, questions for Paul? Yes, Councilwoman Rose.
Hey, where can we preview some of your pieces?
Uh, if you go to lowtidejewelry.com.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the? Seeing none, do I hear a motion?
Rory McIntyre, I'll make a motion to approve seven A. Rory McEntee, I'll make a motion to approve seven A.
Jess Rose, I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilman McEntee, second from Councilwoman Rose. Any discussion? Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Good luck, Paula.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, and that brings us to item eight, public hearings. A is a public hearing relative to proposed amendments to the Town Code, Chapter 17, Taxation, Article Three, Property Tax Exemptions for Elderly Persons. And we will have the authorities tell us what these changes mean. But these are to Section 1743, Applications for Tax Exemption to Contain Evidence of Eligibility. So you can see there on the agenda, changes listed with strike throughs and underlines, and 1744, the amount of the exemptions and filing of applications. All right. Jean, welcome back. You are muted at the moment, Jean.
Hey, good evening. I'm Jean Bouchard, the Town Assessor. Briefly, I would like to provide some background information about the elderly homeowner's tax program. Last year, the council increased the tax credits for this program by 5%. I would like to note that on tonight's agenda, there is an error, an error in the tax credits listed for this program. I incorrectly listed credits that were approved last year. As a result, the credits are actually 5% higher than listed on the agenda and range from a low tax credit of $475 to a maximum tax credit of $2,200.
Jean, just so the councils aware, I'll put up on a screen after Jean's made his presentation, a proposed manager's amendment, so you'll have something to act on.
Thank you.
Okay. Previous to the 2020 tax roll, the tax credits and income brackets for this program had not been adjusted since 2007. During that time, Social Security COLA adjustment had increased by 23%. As a result, there was some discussion last year to increase the tax credits and income brackets alternately each year by 5% to catch up with the Social Security COLA adjustments that took place during that time. So the proposal tonight is to increase the income brackets by 5% as shown on the agenda. This program is based on need for property owners who are age 65 and over. Qualification guidelines include providing proof of income. In addition, property owners must be a full or partial owner of the property. It must be the property owner's primary legal residence that they occupy. And the owner must have owned and occupied the property for the last five years. As a result, there are two proposed changes to the program this year. The first is a 5% increase to the income bracket ranges as shown on the agenda, on the agenda, to a maximum gross household income level of $39,000. And the second, a change in the proof of residency language in the ordinance. Currently, the language reads that to determine proof of residency, a property owner must be registered to vote in the town. We would like to change that language to read, to determine residency, the town may inquire if the applicant is registered to vote in the town and has their motor vehicles registered in the town. Additional back occupation may be requested to verify an applicant's primary home address, such as utility bills or copies of an applicant's federal income tax return. We would like to mail these applications out in March so that we can get ahead of, get ahead of it and be able to certify the tax roll in June. Should the council agree with these recommendations, I would request approval of the resolution that's before you. And if the council has any questions, I'd be happy to try to address them.
Thank you, Jean. Any questions for Jean, Councilwoman Kelso?
How is income verified?
We have an application and we ask for, it's based on gross household income. So any income that comes into the house, Social Security pensions, interest and dividends, IRA income, alimony, gifts, inheritance, rents, business income, capital gains, any type of income they have, they need to list. It's gross household income.
How is that verified?
Documentation. Every one of those pieces of information we asked for, we asked for backup documentation.
Okay, I guess I'm only asking because of the income tax line in the, in the text of the 1743? Is that new income tax or?
If I may.
Yes, if necessary, we'd like to get a copy of their federal income tax.
So if I may explain, the reason the language is being changed is because previously we had required that you must be a registered voter. And actually, that's discriminatory because some people choose not to register to vote. That's their choice. And some people cannot register to vote. Legal aliens, for example, can own property, can live on a green card in the United States for many years and would not be eligible. Discriminating against non-citizens for this kind of program is potentially an issue. So what Jean's listed here are other ways that we might verify if you are not a registered voter. It's most likely the case that, that most program participants, you know, are registered. We will look to that first. And if that's sufficient evidence to demonstrate that they are residents, then we're going to move on to the next thing, which is evaluating their income. This is permissive. It's not mandatory. Jean will only look to the evidence necessary to establish the fact. He's not looking to be intrusive. The least obtrusive piece of information is the information we'll use.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jean or for Rob?
And Mr. President, if I may, I'd like to just share the technical amendment. So that it is part of the record, this table represents the adjustment to the tax credit that was made last year. You'll note that it's $100 more on the top end and it's $25 more on the bottom end than what appeared in the, in the notice. But this proposed technical amendment would be what the town assessor and the town administration would ask that the council approve.
Questions on this new table? All right, if I don't see any other questions, this is a public hearing, so we will open it up for comment from the public. There's anybody here who would like to share an opinion on this matter? Greg Sweet? Hey, Greg. Yes, we can.
Hi, it's Greg Sweet. I think I would suggest, instead of going, making the change 5% a year, I would bump that up quite a bit because it really isn't fair to the elderly. They're not the ones who held us back over the last, you know, 13 years. It wasn't, it wasn't their suggestion. It was done by the town. So I would certainly suggest bumping that up much quicker, if not all in one shot. I don't know what it costs per year, but I doubt it's all that much. Thank you.
I know that we don't actually have very good numbers on costs. Jean, do you have a sense? Just to sort of ballpark, what you think?
No, because there's so many variables. Variables that people have assets that do not, are not included in the equation. But part of those, some of those assets, they derive interest from. And depending on how much a person's pension level is, is the interest they receive or if they're part of a trust that gets income. There's a lot of variables that we, I don't think we could even measure. And that's why we were taking this approach, doing 5% annually so that, you know, we could incrementally see how, how much it goes up. But there's an awful lot of variables here that would be almost impossible to quantify.
Any other public comments? And if you are, Councilman McEntee?
Jean, can you tell us how many applicants have been participating this in the past year? And any data to that as relates to upcoming year?
In 2020, there were 134 applicants. The applicants have actually trended down a little bit each year. And that is to, I mean, over the last five years of tracking this, we had, and over the last five years, we had 46 applicants that had sold their property. 35 were deceased. 24 exceeded the income level. We had 83 applicants that did not respond after being contacted and then having two additional mailings done to them. Members of my staff even tried to initiate phone calls to people who don't respond. So there's a variety of reasons why it has been trending down, but we promote the, the the program through advertising in the newspaper. It's on the town website. It's on the back of the tax bill that this exemption is available. And it's also, information is distributed to the senior center. And there's somebody in the senior center who will provide help over the phone or in person to people who have trouble with the form.
Thank you, Jean.
Councilwoman Berger?
So, well, I'm curious about the lowest income. You know, I'm looking at the chart. I keep looking over at this chart to my right. And so the lowest income, zero to 13,650, and then the next one up is 13,651. Why wouldn't we just take the whole bottom that, just eliminate that row? Because I feel like that's talking about someone who has very low income and started, like, why is that the threshold? And why wouldn't we try to make some equity to, to help the most needy get to equity ahead of all the others? Just, I'm trying to understand the chart. I'll keep looking at it.
So Jean, one way to, to address that question is how many people participate who are in those two income brackets?
Exactly.
And then the next component of that, which we cannot answer, Councilwoman, is how many would be added if, if we were to adjust that number by a full 23%? Now, we, we don't know what would happen there. So Jean, do we know the number who are in the first category? The number of participants?
Um. There, let me hold on for a minute. For, from zero to 13,000, there were eight. And in the next category up, there were five.
The difference is $100?
Well.
Credit times, it's $800? Just to eliminate the bottom bracket?
We can adjust this any way the council would like to.
I guess I just, my value would be the bottom, you know, to bring the bottom up as quickly as, I mean, to give them some more relief rather than trying to make equity across all incomes. That's just seems my thought, but maybe others have thought.
I share that opinion as well.
So the suggestion is just merge the first two together? So it'd be zero to 15,750?
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking. It's eight people.
I'm okay with that.
Jean, I can't think of any administrative reason not to do it. Can you?
I'm sorry, was that a question of me, or?
Yes, I can't think of any reason why that would be operationally difficult or impossible to do or?
No, make it from zero to 15,000, making, making the credit, what is the suggestion for the credit?
I think the same. As the.
So it would be?
2,300.
Yeah.
2,200? 2,200, so make zero to 15,02200. Correct?
Yes, zero to 15,750.
You are introducing into the, into the schedule, a larger gap between the first and second category. I mean, it's, it's not necessarily, you know, an injustice, but you are creating a new sort of cliff, if you will. You go from 2,200 now to below 2,000 as opposed to just stepping down $100. It's not a, not a huge issue, but.
So I think that this is where we need to look at what is equal and what is equitable and what is right in that sense. And I think here we need to go with equitable.
So Jean, if you, if you may, could you tell us what the next category, the third up on the rung is? How many people participate there?
Seven. The subsequent categories after that, the next one, two, three, four categories after that, it picks up. The participation level goes from, for the fourth category is 10, and then 18, and 10, and then 29. So in the middle of the packet, it's, it's, it's more, there's more participation.
All right. So do people have suggestions for changing either the tax credit amounts or other qualification brackets beyond those first two? I mean, we could theoretically do the first three, since those are the ones with sort of low participation. sort of low participation, zero up to 18,400. Then I guess the cliff gets even bigger that Rob was talking about, but Councilwoman Berger, have your hand raised?
Yep. So I guess the question would be based on the numbers you had for participation last year, you know what this program is going to cost, but we haven't heard what it's going to cost, correct? If you.
So there's a bunch of stuff here. We know what the income levels were last year. We can assume that they're a pretty good indicator of what our participation and income levels are going to be next year, but there's no guarantee that that's true. They may, we may have more seniors who have done well in the stock market or more who have had income challenges over the course of the year. So the more we group things together, the more susceptible we are to an unforeseen condition in the, in the marketplace or in the, in the community. I think that if you roll one and two together, you're not likely to, you know, go from, what's that? 12 to, you know, or 13 to some huge number, but you are, you know, as you roll these groups together more and more, you're more susceptible to there being a large number that we're not anticipating. I mean, doubling from 13 to 26 is not going to cause a catastrophe. Doubling, you know, from 134 to 268 would be impactful in terms of the budget.
Councilman, council?
Yes. So I'm, I'm thinking this is probably an objective for our goals and objectives in the tax section to maximize these tax credits or provide them to the maximum amount of people we can over the next two years by, by keeping a watch on this. And maybe next year, we can put the first four categories together or the first five with minimal impact to reach those people who are under 25,000 in a household. I have no objection to combining the first couple of income brackets. We, we probably know it's going to be minimal tax impact to us, revenue impact. But I'd still like to see it go incrementally over the next couple of years.
Thank you. One question, Gene, is the stimulus funding that people are, have gotten over the course of last year going to be part of the income under consideration for this?
My understanding is that that stimulus money is not considered income. It's, I read that today. It's not considered income by the IRF. So we wouldn't consider it as income for for this program.
Any questions or proposals, Councilman Mc?
Gene, I just have one clarifying thing on this. Now, is it household taxable income or is it gross household income regardless of whether it's subject to?
It's different from the federal income tax. It's simple, simple gross household income. Any kind of income that comes into that house, you're obligated to report.
Got it. Thank you.
Councilmember?
So if we could put in, I, I I heard what Deb was talking about as one of the objectives, but did we say that we would have, have a report, an annual report of what the elderly tax abatement or senior tax abatement costs the town so that we could better monitor it and we could make some adjustments?
Yeah, we can, we can provide that each year, yes.
Gene, you have the total cost sitting in front of you. What was the total cost for last?
2020. We continue to accept applications all year long. And we're continuing to do it, but right now we're at $206,000. Two, 206,235 for 134 participants.
Councilwoman Berger, is your hand raised again, or is that? If I don't see any more hands raised at the council, I see that Greg Sweet has his hand up again.
Yeah, if it's 206,000 and you're planning on going up 5% anyways, you're only talking an additional 15% on that. If you went up all at once.
Depends on the number of applicants.
Right.
Well, I mean, going by the information that you have right now, I, I get that it varies up and down. Some people may die or make more money like Gene said. Others may fall into the program. But as it stands right now, you're going to go up 5% for everybody? A 5% increase?
What's a pot? Go ahead.
No, so $39,000 is the top of the program. 20% on top of that would be another $8,000 roughly. So $8,000 to 39 starts possibly drawing in quite a few more participants. Granted, they'd only get 475 each, but you could be drawing in quite a few more. So we just don't know, Greg, what, what the impact is. And we can't just extrapolate from current program participants because we don't know how many are just beyond the bounds of the program criteria.
I, I just, personally, I just don't think it's fair to the elderly because they didn't put themselves in this position, the town did. And I'm not blaming anybody here at all. It's just that's what happened over the last 13 years. So.
Greg, when, when this issue was brought to my attention, we started moving on it. We just are trying to do so in a way that's responsible. I mean, if we doubled the program from $206,000 to 412, it would be significant. It would impact programs. That's more than we send to all of the outside agencies in a given year. It's, it's, you know, a significant chunk of change.
It is, but it may not go that high also.
I'm sorry?
That is a significant chunk of change, but even if you don't do the, the whole 20%, if you only do half of that, I, I just think it should be brought up at a quicker rate, only to be fair to the elderly or the people that qualify.
So the lower end adjustments have less, in less potential impact because we already know the bottom is zero. We already know the participants who are going through the, the ranks up to, you know, the, the first three or four categories. Now, yeah, there will be change, but your point is, is well taken, Greg, with regard to the lowest income brackets. With regard to the upper income brackets, it doesn't hold. We just don't know who's beyond the upper income brackets. There's no way to gauge that.
Okay, it just, I just see them. When I say them, I mean the elderly continuing to not be treated fairly, in my opinion, that's all.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you that relief here is a useful and beneficial thing. We don't want to hurt the senior center though, by, by reducing funds available.
No, but there might be savings in other areas still that, that can be achieved. So, you know, it's not fair to pick on just that, you know, something like that.
No, but my point is that you're trading off program if you're talking about another $200,000. Somewhere a program has to give or taxes have to go up for everybody else.
Yeah, you're right. It could be another 200,000. There's no question. I, I'm just, I'm just trying to point out that the elderly is still taking the brunt of this by putting it off, putting increases off. I, I appreciate your time tonight.
Great. So any sort of further clarifications that we can provide to Gene and Rob about how we might want to amend? This? So, so far I have heard that we will combine the first two brackets. Is that where we want to start? Okay. And then, so those, that zero to 15,750, those folks will qualify for 2200. Are we keeping the brackets the same below that? Not changing any of the? Okay. Are we prepared? For, with language for, for these changes?
I think we can give you a language here. I would suggest that the language is that the council adjust the elderly tax abatement program as presented in the manager's proposed technical report, provided further that the first two categories be combined into one. And that the tax year 2021 tax credit for that first category be $2,200.
I thank you. All right. Is there any further public comment this night? If you are on your phone, you would hit star nine to raise your hand. We do have one listener via phone and it can take a little while before they hear what we say here, unfortunately. So I'll give them a couple of seconds. Seeing no other public comments. Are there any final comments from the council or do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the hearing?
Never mind, we got that hand raised. If we could bring it in. That phone number 1-860. And we have another person after that. All right. So on the phone, you will need to hit star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. If you can just mute your computer or.
Hi, can you hear me?
That is better.
Okay. I, I just want to make sure that I didn't miss the opportunity to make a comment on the public hearing regarding the proposed parking expansion at Green Hill.
Okay, I actually have to ask you to wait. That is the next public hearing. You calling it, but um, stay on the line for another 10 minutes or so, we'll get there.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And thank you. Carmen O'Neil, your hand is raised. If we can bring Carmen in. All right, Carmen, you've been brought into the meeting. You just need to unmute yourself. There you go. And.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, um. Hey, so I also am with the other gentleman waiting to try to talk about the proposed parking at Green Hill Beach Road.
Okay.
So another 10 minutes.
Maybe not even, but we'll, we'll get there soon. Yes.
Okay, so we just stay on the line?
Uh, we'll, we'll bring you back in when we, when we get to that part of the public hearing for that item.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. I think we were about to have a motion on this.
Mr. President, if I may, I just want to come back on one quick thing and that is this. I've heard that one of the objectives is equity and I just want to point out, because this has been a sort of fast discussion. What we're caught, what the council's contemplating, the language I just read would mean that the tax benefit for someone with no income would be $2,200. And the tax benefit for someone with $15,000 with income would be exactly the same. By eliminating that lower tier, we're eliminating the distinction for those with the least income. I just want to point that out because I was trying to figure out, are there any consequences to the adjustment? And eliminating that does put the folks at the very lowest income in the same boat as the folks with low income, but not the same low income. And I, I just want to point that out. Another way to do this would be to simply adjust those two lower amounts faster. Just take those two categories and rather than combine them, increase the tax credit as well as the income levels so that you're moving, making more people eligible for the highest, but you're also increasing that tax credit. It's not a lot of people. We know it's not a lot of people. So there is leverage in that end of the, that end of the table, but I'm not sure that, that we're doing much other than bringing five more people from the second tier an extra hundred bucks. The program that I just spelled out would cost us $500 next year if we had no more participants. It's just, I just want to make sure the council is aware of that.
I hear, I hear. Sorry.
Councilwoman Berger?
So I hear what you're saying, but it's still zero to 13 is a huge range too. So like you're, you're basically saying from zero to 15 or zero to 13, you're talking a couple thousand dollars. I mean, still someone who has zero. I, I mean, I just think about your social security check for 12 months. It's about, if it's $1,500, you're getting $18,000. You're not talking to someone who's making a lot of money here. You know, they gotta eat, pay the, pay the electric, the heat, your water bill, you know? I, I, I hear what you're saying and that's another way to do it. So I, I don't know what the best way to do it is, but I feel like I'm interested in helping the, the most needy in the community the most quickly. So if you think that's a better way to do it, then we can go.
I, I'm not trying to imply, I just was thinking through the consequences of, of combining and it occurs to me that that's what we're doing. It's, it's not, it's not, it's not anything other than an observation about the structure that we've just laid out.
Can I ask a question? Which is, what is the federal poverty line at this point?
Gene, do you happen to have that off the top of your head?
I don't, I don't, I don't.
The poverty level is based on household size. For a, a single family household, I believe it may be $17,000.
Councilwoman Berger?
Well, I just quickly Googled it. The poverty guideline is 12,760 for a family of one, household of one. So.
What was 17, just out of curiosity?
17 is persons of two. Jeopardy. So. I just trying to help the, I'm, I think we all want to help the most needy. I think we could probably agree to that. We just probably want the best way to do that. That's good for the town because we know every dollar we don't take in, someone else is going to pay for it on the other side. But I also feel like there are, you know, I still keep going back to, there's 2,900 people in this town who are over 75. So I just, I just want to be cognizant of them.
So again, I'm going to come at this one more time and suggest the following. We know that the low end, we know the low end, they're already participating. So those first two categories is not subject to the same concern we have at the top end of the scale. We, we don't, we're not going to have many more participants joining this program because they've suddenly. many more participants joining this program because they've suddenly become very poor or very low income. That's another dimension of this. Income for this group isn't necessarily the same as income for working people because lots of senior citizens also have assets, and there's a whole different thing going on there. But we know that the program is stable at the lower end. You can afford to increase the tax credits at the lower end. You could do both at the lower end. You could either maintain the two separate categories and raise the tax credit for both of those categories, or you could combine the two categories and raise the tax credit without doing tremendous. Well, risking doing any any substantial harm. It's just not going to be an unpredicted result. It's not going to be a highly risky result. That area is stable. You've correctly identified a leverage point on this table that is flexible.
So we're really just talking, there's five people, sorry.
In the second category.
Correct. So we would be just moving, we're we're bringing five into the eight, not eight into the five. That's.
Yep, that's right. And it's a hundred dollars difference if the tax credit stays the same. That's correct.
And if we did the first three, it would be under two thousand dollars.
That's correct.
I, so right now, I still think we're talking about combining the first two and keeping basically the table the same, otherwise. You know, I I would be okay with going up to that third bracket. That way we're, you know, to like the poverty line for a household of two, if we have elderly couples. Getting them twenty two hundred. I think that would be okay. But obviously, if we can. Whatever I just wanted to. Councilmember.
I feel good with combining the first two, as we originally discussed here, as our original amendment. And I think gradually adjusting this over time is the way here. I mean, we can always come back to this, have a new public hearing a year from now and further consolidate or merge categories if we'd like, but I think merging the first two there, I'm good with. So I'd like to stick with that.
All right. Councilmember.
Do we have a motion? Because I wanted to add a little amendment. We, do we not?
At this point, if if we're done with, you know, discussion about what the amendment will be, the next motion would be to close the public hearing, then we would have a motion to, you know, adopt a change. So I I mean, do you want to continue discussion on on other? All right, do I hear a motion to close the?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion from Councilwoman McAdie, second from Councilwoman Bergner. Any discussion on this? Anyone opposed? Very good. That motion carries unanimously. And do I hear a motion on? Eight A. And we might need help with this. So that's.
So the motion as last described was a motion to change the senior abatement program to reflect the manager's proposed technical amendment, provided further that the first two categories are combined and that the tax credit available for that new first category be twenty two hundred dollars.
Rory McInnes, I'll make that motion.
All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman McAdie, second from Councilwoman Kelso. Discussion. Councilwoman Berger.
Um, I just was what like to add that maybe we could have the tax assessor provide an update at the end of the fiscal year of how how much participation we have seen so that we have some regular communication about this program?
Yep. Actually have been in the habit of doing that for the last couple of years. You get a report on this one from Gene this year, and there was one last year, so. We we will continue to monitor and let the council know for the program and.
Councilwoman Berger.
When does that, when does that come out?
Gene, the memo that went with this contained the information that Councilwoman Bergner is looking for. What what information did you have in your memo?
The information I had my memo was the participation levels that we are currently at.
But not the cost that wasn't.
The cost is also mentioned in there at two hundred and six thousand dollars.
All right, very good. And I think, you know, as we get into the budget season next year, if we want that more granular, like broken up by brackets, we can we can ask for it.
You do do it.
Okay, we have a Councilwoman Berger.
So I'm 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 just, do we have a report at the end where, what does this program cost and who are the participants, or is it, is it a?
When we get, when we get done certifying the tax rule.
Okay.
The participation level and the number of people who participated by brackets, we provided an annual report. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Gene. I'm sorry for all my questions. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, so we have motion second. Any further discussion? Is there anyone opposed? Right, that motion carries unanimously. And that brings us to eight B, which is a public hearing to consider proposed amendments to the town code, chapter ten, motor vehicles and traffic. This is article two, stopping, standing and parking, section ten dash fifty two prohibited at any time, which is no person shall stop, stand or park a vehicle on any of the following streets, portions of streets at any time, except to avoid conflict with other traffic. And specifically, this is regarding Green Hill Beach Road, and this would change item two under Green Hill Beach Road, parking is allowed on the westerly side between eight AM and eight PM from previously NEC pole number two, three, three, five, and striking that to now say the intersection of Green Hill Ocean Drive and Green Hill Beach Road in the northerly direction for a distance of rather than one hundred and seventy five feet, now two hundred and twenty five feet. Ending at a point adjacent to the northern boundary of lot number eighty nine. Parallel parking is authorized except in front of the twenty five foot driveway entrance to lot number eighty seven, also known as surfside parking lot. Going authorized at discretion of the police. All right. Who wants to describe this for us unless that in itself was a? Chief. And chief, you are muted currently.
Yeah, sorry. When I was brought in, if you go again, Mr. President, and I didn't hear what you had to say before.
Oh, no, I I did. Welcome to the meeting. Thank you for joining us here. If you want to describe, you know, this ordinance and sort of, you know, what what the implications would be.
So with this proposal for the ordinance, we're looking at proposing adding an additional fifty feet of public parking space to the end of Green Hill Beach Road. This was brought to my attention and to our attention by several citizens requesting this. The implications, when I went down there and viewed it, are it's not going to create any type of a traffic hazard if we were to expand that fifty feet. I am of the opinion that, you know, increasing it down there, I realize that there are, I see both sides of the coin. I see the citizens want to access the shoreline, and I also see the other side of the coin, which is the residents have concern. So I think with this public hearing and with presenting this ordinance the way it is, I, it's my opinion that this is something that the council should decide upon if they see fit to change this ordinance and extend the parking fifty feet.
Great. Thank you, Chiefs. Questions for the chief? Is it possible that we have like a a map or a Google image just to show us sort of what this change would be or?
I can pull up Google for you.
The Councilwoman Kelso.
Oh, chief, I'm just wondering if you have any statistics on incidents in the area. We had a number of emails, you know, reporting untoward behavior and wondering if you have any, anything to database.
So I I don't, I don't have any data. I have, I didn't mine any data out of our system. I can say that our demand in all areas of the southern end of town is seasonal. It increases as the weather gets better in the summer. We've had complaints there, off the top of my head, relate relative to parking, to trespassing on on private property, things of that nature. So we do police that and patrol that area on a regular routine, regular basis. You know, all throughout the year, but majority of the time that we're called down there is relative to the warm weather when the demand access the beach is increased.
And I can pull that image up for the council if you'd like.
Yeah, thank you. And Councilwoman Bergner, your hand is raised.
Yeah, I'm I I'm glad that we're putting up the map. I'm just not familiar with the area, and I just wanted to to know the two lots in front of it's the town, it's the land trust and town property.
This, if if folks can see my cursor moving, can you see my cursor?
Yep.
So this is town land, the fifty feet that's being contemplated right here. This is the spot. This is town land. It's really just, and it's my understanding that this is quite often parked on now. And in fact, one of the concerns is that people park beyond what is being contemplated as permitted parking and and park in front of this driveway and park further up the road in a way that is not beneficial. But that's the spot.
All right, thanks. I think that helps. So other questions from council members? Councilwoman Rose.
I just want to confirm there is a public right of way in that vicinity. Um, and also to a point out that in our goals and objectives, we state that public points of access to the coast and recreational waterways for a wide variety of activities will be abundant. So I think we need to keep that in mind when we consider this. And I also have a question for Chief Hui Chao. Is the, in regards to the trespassing, can you speak to what some of those concerns are? Is it trespassing on the beach? On property in regards to I mean, parts of the beach are considered public property. So can you just speak a little bit to that, please?
Yeah, so we oftentimes get calls of those property owners that own land that abut the shoreline. We often get calls about people trespassing on that beach area that they have determined to be their property. The difficult situation with that is, as the police officer responds down to try to handle it, there is no way for the police officer to determine where the mean high watermark is because that needs to be engineered and needs to be done that way. So we respond down to all those complaints, which we ask people to to move on and kind of go closer towards the the shoreline and move away from whatever resident is complaining. But that's generally what I meant by trespassing. People have certain sections of property that extend out onto the beachway, and they determine that people trespass on their land.
Thank you. Um. So I guess that would be an issue for me, like determining where that mean high tideline is. I you know, access to the coast is is a right, and it shouldn't be impeded by private property owners. It's just an issue for me, and I think we should look at that a little bit closer. I thank you for your answer. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you both. Councilwoman Berger.
So two questions. I think one is a shorter answer, and maybe the second is longer. So how was the eight AM to eight PM determined? My my understanding, and I'm not a surfer, is that surfers tend to go out early, like, early, like five AM, six AM time. So why this time? And then I'm not familiar with what happened recently in Narragansett with the change in their parking and how that relates here, but so that's maybe a question for someone else, but I don't know. Those two things I have questions about.
In terms of time, I don't know. The eight AM to eight PM had, was preestablished with the existing ordinance, and I'm not familiar why that time came up as eight AM to eight PM, so I can't answer to that. I don't know the his, the history of that and how that was developed.
And Narragansett and their parking, it was just a couple of weeks ago. I just didn't follow it.
Rob, do you have any?
Yeah, no, I I don't. I I I don't. I don't know what Narragansett has done.
Perhaps one of our attendees will know. All right, any other questions for the chief or or anyone on this? Susan, your hand is raised. Did you want to say something?
We have received several communications on this that need to be put on the record. I can just read who they are each from, if you will. There is one from David H. Moore of Green Hill Beach Road. James and Donna Murphy, also of Green Hill Beach Road. Carmen and Bob O'Neil, Green Hill Beach Road. John Bacon, Green Hill Beach Road. Michael and Margaret Frank Core, Green Hill Beach Road. John and Lori Bacon, again, Green Hill Beach Road. Lois Gondick. Who says she's an abutting property owner, lot ninety one. Daniel Tenona, who is the community liaison for the Green Hill Civic Association. And also John Powers, who lives on Green Hill Beach Road as well.
Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome.
All right, any comments, questions for council members? If not, we'll go to the public. Councilwoman Berger.
So the town land that's right there, is that, is it not, is it wet? Is it not possible to use this parking? I mean, seems like there's an interest to park there. Is that not a lot that would be appropriate for something?
It might make sense to bring John Shock in.
All right, we can bring John in. I will say, Councilwoman Berger, that that was another request of the, you know, the residents who are requesting this, you know, expansion along the street. I think at the time, this was sort of deemed low hanging fruit, and then, you know, potentially looking into that possibility was was on the table. See what John said.
John, any thoughts on on the town owned land and wetlands impact of development of parking on the town land? John, any thoughts on, on the town owned land and wetlands impact of development of parking on the town land?
Yep. So there's, there's actually three lots in between, I guess, the, the condo parking lot. The first is owned by the land trust to the north. Then there's the towns lot and then there's a private lot. And the town portion, just through generalized wetlands, it looks like a good part of that property is, is encumbered with wetlands. That doesn't mean we couldn't do something, but it certainly makes it more difficult than would likely require a CRMC assent as well. So I, I, to be honest with you, I just don't know how much parking we could yield out of the town's parcel without doing, you know, a detailed engineering plan and then submit it to, to CRMC.
Thanks. Any other questions? Councilwoman Kelso.
How many cars can parallel park in 50 feet?
Three or four. Three or four.
Thank you.
The size of the cars.
Right. Any other? All right, then at this point, we'll open it up for public comment. And I'll call on folks in the order in which they raise their hands. If you're on your phone, just hit star nine. And then when we let you in, hit star six to unmute yourself. First up, we have Nate Merrill.
Hey, good evening. You all can hear me?
Yeah. Yes.
Nate Merrill, 186 South, South Whedon Road in South Kingston, Rhode Island. So I'd like to speak in favor of this change in the ordinance. So this is a public road that ends in a right of way to the beach. That's very popular with fishermen, surfers and general beach walkers. Parking is restricted down there. There's not a lot of space. And as you can see, there's a lot of unbuildable lots that now have chains across them. There's sort of private parking lots in the area. So people want to get there. It's important place for us to get to the water and move along the coast. There's DEM land to the west along the beach and there's federal land to the east. And this is the most natural place to get to the beach and move along it. So I'm speaking in favor of it. There's along where we're asking for parking, there's, it's along town land and SK land trust. So it's not immediately abutting people's property. It seems low impact to us. So please approve this and keep working towards making the coast more accessible than it is now. And in terms of the question about Narragansett, it was a similar issue on Pilgrim Ave. Councilwoman Burgner looking for better parking that was taken away when lots were built up and people seem to want to keep the public away from a natural resource. So getting to the Green Hill area is important and we like to maintain it and improve it if we can. So thank you for that.
All right, thank you, Nate. Next up, we have Carmen O'Neill. All right, Carmen, you just need to unmute yourself.
Got you. Can you hear me? Hi, so I live at 10, we own the property at 1038 Green Hill Beach Road, which is across from the lot where the parking is now. If you look at the map, we are the house with the hedges. When we bought in 2004, there was no parking across the street. It wasn't until a few years later that they allowed eight parking spots between the gates of that parking lot across the street. Since then, the parking has increased. Illegal. We deal with urination, diapers, alcohol, trash, people urinating on my front lawn because I have hedges. I've walked out and people are showering with a camping type gadget for a shower to get the sand off their, off their body so that they can change. It is not a public beach. It is a beach access way. There is no trash facilities. There is no lifeguard. There is no bathroom. So people make do and unfortunately, the people that live on Green Hill Beach Road close to that access, we are the ones that suffer. We are the ones that have to pick up condoms, beer cans, beer bottles, deal with people changing in the middle of the street. I am all for a natural resource. Everybody should be entitled to use a, a public beach, but this is not a public beach. The hours from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM are beachgoers hours, not surfers hours. They're not allowed in the water when the public are in the water for safety reasons. I love the surfers. They're great, but they're there early in the morning. Not 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. If you allow this, it's just going to increase trash, urination. Trespassing, people have parked in my driveway because there's no parking across the street. So even though I'm not directly on the beach, I'm so, I'm steps away, but that doesn't give anybody the right to park in my, my driveway. Unless I give them permission and I don't know these people. We're not there year round. We're fortunate enough to be able to have this little cottage, but it doesn't give anybody the right to park there or urinate on my lawn or shower on my lawn or use my trash cans. And it's just going to get worse if you allow this. A woman, Lois Gonczak, who lives across the street that abuts that pub, that town property, people are already parking on her lawn. That's private property. They should not be allowed to do this. This is just going to create a much more dangerous situation. People walk their families. People rent houses up the street. They're walking with children up and down the street. People walking their pets. I have a pet that I walk every day down there. People come flying around the corner and then people do donuts in that little cul-de-sac. The two, then there's two food trucks, an ice cream truck and a cupcake truck. They block the access so people cannot see when they're walking off of the public beach, which is not a public beach. It's an access path. And people coming and going on, on golf carts and bicycles and motorcycles and cars and it's, it's, it's a dangerous situation that if you allow this extra parking, it's just going to enhance it because it's just going to get worse. It's just going to get worse. And those poor people that save up and buy those oceanfront homes, they try to put up fences. I've seen it. They put up fences and the public just rip it out of the sand. People are leaving trash bags on their, on their fences. People are leaving towels. People are hanging their bathing suits. You are not down there. You do not see this on a daily basis. There is no patrol. They come at seven in the morning when it's nice and calm and people walking their dogs with their coffee. They're not there at night. They're not there when people are three cars deep parked across the street. It's, it's going to make a bad situation worse. And I oppose this. And I hope you actually consider the ramifications that if you do approve, approve this, that it will cause. It is not good. People can go to, there are plenty of public beaches. Charlestown Beach is five minutes down the street. You have Narragansett, big surfing community over there. South Kingston Town Beach. There are plenty of other beaches around that this, that other people, and I'm not just naming the surface because the surface usually aren't the issue. It's all the beachgoers. This is not a public beach. It is not. It's an access path. Oh, I'm sorry. I can't hear you.
Sorry, I was, I just wanted to thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Want to give other folks a chance to.
Sure.
Thank you. And if we can bring in next number, the, the phone number 1860.
How do I get out of here?
You'll be, you'll be. You can unmute yourself if you want. All right, on the phone in the ending at 881, if you hit star six now, you will unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you can. And again, if you can just mute whatever is in the background where you're hearing our audio.
Okay, is that better?
Uh, yes.
Okay, um, my name is John Bacon. I live in the affected right of way cul-de-sac area along with my wife Lori. I'm actually a next door neighbor to Carmen O'Neill. I'd just like to go through some points and bring up some observations in addition to what Carmen mentioned. I think people really don't understand why our neighborhood is so vocal now. We're really frustrated that our voices and concerns don't count and don't matter. The current parking policy clearly does not work. It's broken. And here's a few reasons why. The pandemic virtually doubled, doubled summer vehicle volume at Green Hill in 2020 due to the closed town and state beaches. People are even parking cars at Green Hill Park and walking down to the right of way. One of the big things is that there's total disregard for legal parking boundaries and posted parking times. The eight to eight timeframe is definitely not observed as others have mentioned. Cars come at 6:00 AM to get a spot and often leave after 9:00 PM. On one October day, I counted as many 30, as 30 surfers car, 30 surfer cars parked illegally everywhere and anywhere during the month of October and, and some in homeowners driveways. Now, the citizens that initiated this proposals are actually citizen surfers and they, they did the same thing in, in Narragansett. The public street parking inflated vehicle capacity, which is currently permitted now. And it's so excessive due to the tiny size of the beach. Our beach is, is a microcosm of what state and town beaches are. Carmen brought up a good point. There's often speeding traffic and this is hazardous to pedestrians. She also brought up that the two large food trucks that are ever present in July and August are a real safety hazard. They actually block the entrance to the right of way and this amplifies the danger to, to pedestrians. Public decency is an issue. That was also brought up. People are disrobing and changing their clothes in the streets. And, you know, the public urination is also an issue due to the lack of bath facilities. We have the issue of street garbage, which is a big issue and that's a direct result of the public parking. We must either remove our own trash garbage cans immediately after pickup. Otherwise, the passersby from the beach will fill our own garbage cans with trash bags, half eaten sandwiches, fruit and, fruit and so on. Parking is being offered as if Green Hill is a public beach. And Carmen brought up, it's not an actual public beach. Let's take a look at some of the characteristics of a Rhode Island town or state public beach. Public beaches have a lifeguard. Public beaches have numerous trash receptacles that are emptied daily and public beaches have bathrooms. The Green Hill right of way has none of these. Public beaches also have an expansive beach area, not a tiny beach area, which is a fraction of the size of a town or state beach like Green Hill. We have a tiny beach area. So in effect, Green Hill meets none of the criteria. It should not be valued or should not be rather viewed as a public beach. So again, what exactly is Green Hill? It's merely a family neighborhood with a right of way that allows access to the beach. That's it. Nothing more, nothing less. So how do we fix the overcrowding in, in parking problem? Well, obviously the quickest and simplest fix would be to totally eliminate all street parking or at the very least, stop the proposed parking expansion. A parking ticket in Newport is $40, $43.50 if you pay online. Last summer in mid-July, I believe Mr. Narzetsky increased the parking, parking fine on Succotash Road leading to East Batunik State Beach from $25 to $150. Mr. Zarnetsky, maybe you were on to something here. It's obvious the current South Kingston $25 parking citation is no deterrent. It costs a non-resident $28 at Musquamica to park, $20 at Blue Shudders Beach and Charlestown Town Beaches to park there. The ticket at Green Hill, the so-called penalty, is the same amount as if they went to park at one of these beaches. In most cases, even if cars are illegally parked, tickets are not issued and they park for free. And the word gets around and amplifies even further traffic. South Kingston Police Patrols, and maybe it's a budget issue, they're infrequent. In most cases, we get a patrol once daily, sometimes twice daily on weekends. And sometimes the first patrol is at 7:00 AM in the morning before there's even any traffic there. So in a nutshell, at the very least, I think we should maybe follow Mr. Zarnetsky's lead and increase the parking fines, parking fines permanently to $150 year round. Now, this is an actual deterrent. People are obviously going to think twice about parking illegally if they have to pay $150 sign. So I'd like to request that we get more assistance from the South Kingston Police Department and have patrols at peak hours. Also, cars need to be towed if gates and driveways are blocked. No more trying to find the car's owner and politely request they move their vehicle. The time for this has passed. The current parking policy directly caused all the issues that we have, we have all detailed. I think South Kingston now needs to get some skin back in the game. Years ago, we had a trash receptacle in front of the right of way. So why not, why doesn't the town place a trash receptacle at the entrance of the right of way? It, it used to be a 55 gallon drum where, where the Public Works Department of Sound Kingston picked, picked up the trash daily. The food trucks, as mentioned earlier, are a definite obstruction and safety hazard. The trucks are wedged side by side and create blind spots concealing speeding traffic. What bothers residents really is the total lack of respect for, for the area. Even the recently erected right of way sign put up on the town has graffitis and stickers plastered all over it. My old friend Bruce Kaiser once commented to me when we were talking about a controversial town manner. Without law and order, we have chaos. And this is a perfect summation of what is, we are dealing with and what is going on in the Green Hill right of way area. In evaluating the feasibility of the proposed parking expansion, I would request that town council members personally view the area at peak traffic times in July and August, then make a decision. It's important to remember, Green Hill is a neighborhood that should be respected like any other neighborhood. Under the current policy, especially in the summer, Green Hill now seems a little bit more like Coney Island with every passing day. Thank you for the time to be able to get my thoughts across to you.
All right, thank you, John. Have a good evening. And next we have David Moore. While we bring him in, I just wanted, did we have a 55 gallon trash can there? What happened to that policy?
Those were COVID, the $150 fine on Succotash Road and the, the prohibition of parking on Moonstone Beach Road and the Green Hill Beach Road near the right of way were all COVID restrictions. They were all designed to keep densities in those popular areas down. So they were just temporary measures.
Yeah, I was just wondering about that. What the gentleman said about us having trash picked up. Did we use?
Oh yeah, many years ago, John, you may be able to comment on when you picked up trash down at Green Hill Beach Road.
Yeah, we've had one out at Middlebridge Road, but I don't recall in my tenure with the town, which is now 35 years, us ever having one down at, at Green Hill Beach Road. It may have predated me, but I don't recall one down there.
Councilwoman, let's see which one of you raised your hands for? Councilman Rose?
Um, this may be a question for Mike. Can we get some clarification on what defines a private beach versus a public beach?
Well, so I, I think what you're asking is the issue of there is a right of way that goes through that area that goes out onto the beach to that goes out onto the beach, to the ocean. And people have the right to traverse the area between the, you know, below the mean high tide line, which is very difficult to figure out where it is, but whether the beach is private or public, individuals in the state of Rhode Island have the right to go up and down that area below the mean high tide line. Public beaches are well-defined. They're owned by the state of Rhode Island or by a town, such as the town of South Kingston, town of Narragansett, town of Westerly, et cetera. Private beaches are attached to people's private property that border the ocean. So, um, as I sit here, I don't know what the status is. And maybe someone on the Zoom meeting can tell you what the status is of the patch of land in front of the water is where that right of way comes out. I I don't know what the status is of that.
It may be helpful to pull the the map back up if you'd like, Mr. President.
I guess like more specifically, my question would be, does Green Hill Beach meet the criteria for a private beach?
I don't. I don't think so because it's federal. Part of Green Hill is federal, and that's certainly open to the public.
Thank you so much.
There there is a private beach club there, of course, and but in a certain sense, I think Councilwoman Rose, you know, all beaches have some public access, public aspect in Rhode Island, and that, you know, everybody has a constitutional constitutional right to access that that area, so.
The question really becomes whether or not citizens are allowed to like put their folding chairs or their blankets on the beach, on the area above the mean high tide line. That's that's where all of the issues arise, including one we had in South Kingston a year, a couple of years ago.
So if we're if we're asking people to to move from where they are after they access that right of way, and there is no way to determine the mean high tide mark, what is the criteria for asking people to move?
Well, no, there is a there is a way to determine it, but it's it's very involved and very complicated. It's certainly not something that our police force has the ability to manage. There are, I know a number of bills circulating the General Assembly to try to clarify it. We're all going by a Rhode Island Supreme Court case of many years ago that set that as the standard. What the problem is, is that that mean high tide watermark keeps changing constantly. And as global warming continues, it keeps getting pushed further up. And and no one, to my knowledge, is really keeping track of where it is at any given place at any given given time. So it's an extremely, extremely difficult question to answer. I I think the only way it's answered in the real world, so to speak, is that if someone does have a home which fronts on the water and they own the land between their home and the water, and they can have a surveyor or someone take the measurements, they then can make a case in court that says, hey, people can't sit beyond this area. But that's a very costly and time-consuming process. But I think Rob suggests we put that map back up. It'd probably be helpful to look at that again. But although they're all connected, the issue before you is really whether or not you want to add three or four more parking spaces to the road. That's that's really people, people are parking there in sections that are legal, and they are accessing the water after parking their cars in those legal areas. The question is whether you want to make the legal area a little bit bigger.
This is the right of way relative to the parking, the three or four parking spaces that are being considered tonight. This right of way is all the way down to the ocean. Everyone in South Kingston has the right to come straight into the ocean in that line. The question becomes, where can they go horizontally? It is the mean high watermark that they can access horizontally. So when folks come in and go here, they're well above the mean high watermark, and private property rights do get impacted.
So then I guess my question would be, does the responsibility, when when people are being asked to move from those that area, does the responsibility lie on the homeowner at that point to show that where their property actually ends? I would think that that would be the case.
Yeah, so the position, the position the town has taken is that our police department is not does not have the ability to adjudicate a civil trespass matter. That's basically what it would be. If a private landowner is saying, you are on my beach, or you are on my property, that's known as civil trespass. And to answer your question, yes, it's our position, the town's position, that's up to the private property owner to adjudicate because our police department does not have the ability, or for that matter, other departments within the town does not have, do not have the ability to go out there and figure out where that line is.
We do, the police department do, however, maintain the policy that we will keep the peace. If a conflict, even on private property, is getting heated, our officers will intervene.
Right, there could be disorderly conduct charges, but that's that's exactly what, right, Rob? Of course, they'll keep the peace, and if necessary, charge individuals with disorderly conduct. They just can't make that underlying determination of of property rights. But you are totally correct. So people have the right to come all the way down Green Hill Beach Road to access the water, and then horizontally, either east or west, they can go in whatever direction they want to go in, as long as they're below the mean high tide watermark. And of course, the big issue or question is, well, where is that?
I see Councilwoman Burgling, her hand is raised.
Yeah, I heard heard the food truck issue, and so I remember a few years ago that the planning board was working on a food truck ordinance. So is that, I don't know where that stands, if we ever, if one was ever passed or where that ordinance is. But I mean, the the food trucks are, I guess, are just basically parking there all day. So I didn't I didn't know if that could be included in some information that we put out, because, I mean, I'm hearing a lot from residents. I mean, I I guess I'm very sensitive to it, because where I live, my community, my neighbors are feel stressed about Brusso Park when there's soccer, and it's really on a couple of of weekends. And I get people parking everywhere and all over people's lawns. It's the same thing that happens at the parks. I'm very sensitive to the how frustrating that can be. So I'm just trying to figure out a couple of elements to that problem. One obviously is enforcement and how to enforce, and then the food trucks and the trash.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We did pass the food truck ordinance, I think we required to. And from my point of view, I would suspect that they were parking there illegally, just from what I've heard from people. But i- if they were, if they're parking on private property and they were invited to, then they would be legally parked in that circumstance. But other, do you have any more to add on that, Rob?
We do have an ordinance. The ordinance does restrict the parking even on private property. It's a zoning requirement. So if you're there for more than, I can't remember the exact number of events, but I think it may be three events, then you're beyond the zoning and you'd have to come looking for a special permit. So there is a local ordinance that that covers parking on private, on public roads and on private property. So we would, we would want to know more about that. I haven't heard any specific complaints before tonight.
Councilwoman Rose, your hand is up, but maybe that's from before. Okay, then let us get back to public comment. Michael Francour.
Excuse me, David Moore here.
Oh, sorry, David, you brought it. Please.
Yep. Thank you very much, and thank you for hearing us. Let me start by saying, I validate, I live at 1028 Green Hill Beach Road, directly across the street from the the area that we're discussing tonight. John Bacon's my next door neighbor. I first want to validate John's comments as well as Carmen's comments. I can't add anything more to exactly what they said about the illegal activity happening there and also the increasing safety problems that we face. But I guess to put a kind of exclamation on the conversation from my perspective, when I received the email that you're taking this up, I was flabbergasted. Frankly, it's it's an outrageous proposal. I thought what I was going to be reading in the email that we were going to go back to 2004 and eliminate all of the parking because of the issues that my neighbors have already talked about. You're actually considering adding three more parking spaces. Well, the number three isn't a big number. I got that. You're going to make a bad ordinance worse. Back in, as Carmen said, somewhere circa 2004, there was no parking down there at all. And and then the town passed an ordinance and allowed parking, and since then, we've had parking creep up and down that street. So I think John Bacon made a very reasonable proposal, which was table this conversation until the council has an opportunity in a Tuesday in July to come down and take a look at exactly what we're facing, what we're talking about. We've got serious environmental issues going on, which we've all documented in emails we've submitted. We've got health issues going on, which we've documented and submitted. We've got safety concerns, which we've documented and submitted. We've all brought up the points. This is an accessory. It's not a beach. And we can argue about the public's right to traverse back and forth and sit, and you guys can litigate that. But but back to the parking issue that we're looking at, all the illegal activity that's taking place today, it's not going to get better by adding three more parking spaces. The safety concerns we have, it's not going to get better by adding three parking spaces. The public urination, the littering, the the everything else that's been brought up, it's not going to get better with with adding three more parking spaces. It's just going to get worse. So I I'll finalize my comment by saying, we request that you table this conversation, take a look at it in the summer. But frankly, the ordinance that was passed years ago was a bad ordinance, and you may make, you will make it worse if we add more parking. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Next, we have Michael Francour. All right, Michael, if you just unmute me.
Now I'm on, now I'm unmuted. Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to comment, and, you know, the neighbors that that have spoken tonight are not beachfront properties. My wife and I, Margaret, have been a summer resident of Green Hill Beach for 31 years. And everybody that you're hearing from is on the road going up Green Hill Beach Road. We're not on the front properties. We observe the issues that you're talking about, about trying to figure out mean high tide rares and from the private beach, the beach, Green Hill Beach Club to Matucket by the Sea, and many of the private owners along the shoreline, we see them, you know, putting up ropes and putting up signage and trying to enforce public, you know, private property all along the the shoreline there. And I really don't have any problem with with beach access and and having people, you know, who respect the beach, come down for a short walk, you know, walk their pets and 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 who don't litter, who don't undress, who don't drink, don't urinate in public. Those, I have no issues with 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 residents having access to the beach. And, you know, there is an issue, because as you're saying, this is just simply a beach access point. I I would guess at maximum, it's 40 feet in width. It may be even less than that. I don't know if you have that specifics. But but it's a, it's a really, you know, very small piece. And as you mentioned, with with the the beach erosion, with the rising tides and and water levels, that beach area continues to shrink anyway. It's getting smaller and smaller. But one thing I really want to impress upon this town council is just how busy this area is during the summer months and how that addition of of three or four spots is going to impact public safety, safety, litter, public undress, public urination, and that expand by the expansion of that area. Right now, as you've mentioned, there's no receptacles for pickup of garbage, no public toilets. And that road, that Green Hill Ocean Beach Road that that goes to the right as you come into that little, we call it a cul-de-sac. It's at the end of the southernmost point of that. People, you know, come down Green Hill Beach, and there's another beach, there's Matucket by the Sea, there's private residences all along that area. And you have people coming into that area going, you know, at a at a good clip, and there's no speed bumps. There's no, everybody who tries to walk down that beach road to gain access to the beach access has to traverse in front of the Green Hill Beach Club exit, which people come out of. And although I think they have a sign that says stop, it's not respected, and people come into that area. You have those food trucks sitting there right, and they sit right at the front of the beach access. So it's on the town property that they that they sit there going at the front of that. And then you have bicyclists, kids coming back up to the beach to go to those trucks. And you just have an, you've got a real potential problem with traffic, and then you have people going into the surfside parking area. They stop, they have to get out of their cars, they're half in the road to open up the gate and then get back in their car and go into the surfside. And then, you know, and the same thing when they come out again. So it's it's a very busy area, and it is not, my feeling is that if you you have more spaces for this, that you're you're really creating, you know, more of an issue and more of a problem, like all my neighbors have have talked about. And and I just ask you to respect that this is a a neighborhood. It is not a public beach. And I'd ask the town to really just to protect the nature of our neighborhood. I I really, I don't have any issues with people getting, having access to the beach, but I think that the the behavior of that we see and observe and have is a circus kind of environment that that is not, is not a pleasant one for anybody living in in a neighborhood to have to experience. So I want to, I want to thank you for the time and the ability to to share my thoughts tonight.
All right. Thank you, Michael. And next is Conrad Furlong. All right, Conrad, you just need to unmute yourself.
Good evening. How are you guys?
Well, thank you.
My name is Conrad Furlong. I'm a taxpayer and year-round resident of 437 North Road, South Kingston. I am in here as a part of adding approximately 50 feet of public parking on a town road near a public right of way. This 50 feet is in front of townland and SK Land Trust land. The Rhode Island Constitution grants access 10 feet above the high tide line, which is public. All right, it's it's 10 feet above the high tide line, as wide as an ox cart, to gather and collect your seaweed. All right, there's nothing, there's no mention in the state constitution. All right, there's nothing, there's no mention in the state constitution about sitting or not moving, that's just not in there. So this public road leads to both state land and federal land. There are three CRMC public right-of-ways to the west and as well as a public right-of-way to the east. One of the things I have to say about public parking is, in fact, reducing public parking has motivated private parking. If you look along the west side of Green Hill Beach Road, where there were lots that were undevelopable, couldn't build on because they're wetlands, they have now become of value. There was no parking there, but now they have become private parking lots. And the reason for this is most, that most of the houses in that area are seasonal rentals owned by out-of-state landowners who are using it as Airbnb. And on their Airbnb sites, they offer private beach parking and private access to a private beach, when in fact, it is public. All public shorelines in Rhode Island are protected under the Rhode Island Constitution. Not only that, if you read the 2010 harbor management plan, they bring forth these issues and they suggest resolving it and including access and parking to the public access area. On this stretch of beach, and I have documented it, all right, we have videos of it, of people doing it. And it's got actually some of the stuff that's happened on this beach is going from the Judiciary Committee tomorrow of the House of Representatives. S.K. residents such as myself and other residents in that area, not on the water, have been physically assaulted by beach owners where they've come up and actually knocked people out of their beach chairs. They've been threatened, and the police have been called. In fact, in the 1980s, the town tried to prevent building on this entire stretch of beach, but the power of influence and money made sure that it would never actually happen. And it went to Rhode Island Supreme Court, and they were allowed to build on these sandbars that are unsustainable. Almost nobody on that stretch of house is a year-round resident. All but two are from out-of-state and do not live there year-round. And lastly, which is probably my most concerning, all right, why were letters sent to houses that live around this public right-of-way, town land and town road, but letters were not sent to the general public, when in fact, it is public property? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Conrad. Next, we have Kyla and Rob, if you want to take them.
So I think the answer to the question, you know, why letters were sent to the property owners is because the main method for communication to the public is publication in a newspaper. And we are aware of the fact that the property owners do not live there year-round. So publication in a newspaper was not going to be effective. We wanted to make sure that people had a fair opportunity to participate in a public hearing that impacted the neighborhood. The general public did receive notification through the publication of the newspaper. Mailing letters to everyone in South Kingstown would have been cost prohibitive.
Hi, I'm glad I heard about this, and I heard about it through a friend, so I'm thankful, because I don't live on Green Hill Beach Road, but I live in our community. I live on Hemlock Road in South Kingstown, and I run down Green Hill Beach Road a couple times a week, and I pick up trash. And I will say, I've been going to that beach since 1988, and I want to say that a lot of the traffic and the change of scenery has been because of the development and how the houses have tripled and quadrupled in size. It is not the people that are parking in those parking spots. Those are families with young children that want to access the water. I run, I walk, I love the ocean just as much as everybody else. It is not the parking. We're here to talk about parking. Three parking places is not going to change the scenery in July. It's the rentals, it's the summer houses, and it's the size of the houses, the population. So I just want to speak for our community and our families and our children. And I don't usually do this. I don't even usually attend these meetings, but I have a passion here. And I want to speak for our future generation and access to the water. I mean, I love South Kingstown. I grew up in South County. And I want my children to be able to experience what I did. So I don't really have much more to say other than this isn't about parking, this is about respect for each other. This is about respect for our community and a respect just treating people with human dignity. So I don't have much more to say, but I think if we stick to the topic of parking, it's not, what we're talking about in these other conversations is about development. We can put three parking places if we can build mansions. That's all. That's all I have to say. So thanks for listening, and I'm a little nervous about this, so I feel a little awkward, but that's all.
I appreciate that very much, Kyla. If you wouldn't mind, just state your last name for the record.
Actually, this is my daughter. My daughter uses my computer for school. My name is Beth Welshman. And I just, I, it's not about parking. We just want three spots for people to bring their children, to collect shells, look at the beach, and go swimming. That's not a lot to ask for the common middle-class family in South Kingstown. That's it, thanks.
Appreciate your comments. Next, Tom Tierney did have his hand raised first. I don't know if he's being brought in. Or I don't know, Tom Tierney or John Ryder, whoever we can get in. All right. Yeah, all right, Tom, you are in the meeting. If you can unmute yourself, we'll be able to hear you. And to unmute yourself, you need to go down to the bottom left-hand corner.
I believe I'm in, folks.
Yes, we can hear you.
First of all, thank you, councilors. Work well done. Appreciate you. I'd like to just spend a second. I'm president of the Green Hill Beach Club, which is a butter to the public right-of-way, directly impacted by the parking at the cul-de-sac and any additional parking. My biggest concern with this moving forward is, you know, public safety. It's become more than a public right-of-way. This is a beach. It's turned into a beach. The renters in the area, it's a very huge rental community now, Green Hill, the whole area in there, Motocat, everyone's renting now. They bring their people in, they ride bikes, they drop them. We have a 50-foot right-of-way that's become a 200-person beach every weekend. So that's my biggest concern with this. There's no lifegods, there's no public sanitation systems, there's no trash receptacles. You know, I don't know, everybody much puts this out there. You know, it's a giant concern. With me, probably five or six rescues a year at the Green Hill Beach Club from people that are there at the right-of-way, they're coming in, they have no idea what the currents are there, what the surf is. People are just unaware. It's just a public safety issue. I'm surprised there has many really tragic incidents there. I don't want to restrict public right-of-way. I'm a surfer. I grew up surfing at Green Hill. It brings another point to the point, you know, there's limited space there, there's limited access to the water. You can only go either direction, you can only go a half mile. Is, you know, the public right-of-way, the access, ocean access is blocked on both directions. So that's my point. Public safety would be paramount. I think you guys need to consider that. Moving forward, it's not a beach any longer. It's now a, it's not a public access any longer. It's now a beach. I think you should consider that. Thank you very much for your time, guys.
Tom, while you're here, do you have any insight on these food trucks that are coming down there?
The food trucks park to the edge of our property, pretty much in the middle of, not, I'm not going to say in the middle because there's always access to the right-of-way, but on either side or on one side of the right-of-way. Not on the beach club property.
Town property?
Pardon me?
On town property, on the right-of-way?
I believe it's on town property. It's not on ours. And typically, there's 20 to 30 bikes parked on the other side. And then the two, the two food trucks, I believe it's a cupcake truck and a ice cream truck that are parked towards our side of the cul-de-sac. We typically have someone on the gate that allows our members to come in, and we keep, we keep the food trucks off our property. So they're pretty much parked on town property. You know, moving forward, you know, we have the eight spots. I'm not trying to constrict anyone. I wouldn't ever promote that. I've surfed and used the beach my whole life. But I think it's just become, at this point, you know, public safety is the biggest issue down there. I really think you guys need to really consider that. Moving forward, I think there's going to be, you know, hopefully not in the near future or ever in the future, but there's going to be some kind of a catastrophe there. There's giant surf and giant waves.
All right, thank you, Tom.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate your time.
Good evening.
You too.
Next up, we have John Ryder. Great. John, you're in the meeting. If you unmute yourself.
Good evening, members of the council. Thank you very much for giving me the time to speak tonight. Our coast and our beaches are meant for all and not for just those that can afford to live in those neighborhoods. This is public property and should be open to the public. And being open to the public doesn't just mean having an access way to the shore. It means having access there via parking. Adding three more parking spaces to this area would be a very good addition. Our comprehensive plan, our harbor management plan, both speak to more public access along our shoreline. And I support this. This, as previous speakers have said, this is a beach. This is a public right-of-way. Not just a right-of-way, but a public right-of-way. And I think when we hear concerns about public safety, there's a lot of open spaces in South Kingstown. We're not concerned about those not having trash receptacles or not having bathrooms or people tripping over a stick in the woods. Yeah, sometimes this big surf at our beaches, I surf year-round. You know, myself, my kids, we live in this town, we try to access these areas, and people need to be aware of the dangers of the natural environment when they go there. And not allowing access to those areas would be a very negative way of addressing why people want to get out in nature. So I please implore you to add these three additional parking spaces. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Next, we have Greg Sweet.
Hi. Where is the Land Trust land in relationship to, say, the town property?
It's directly to the south of the town's property. So if you're looking at it on that map, it's just to the north of that private parking area that exists.
Is there any access to that where that could be made parking? If, obviously, if the Land Trust would allow something like that. I don't know whether it's all wet or what.
I think it's more dry than the town property, certainly. So I mean, I think it's a different discussion, of course, but you know, if the Land Trust wanted to do a land swap theoretically with the town so that we could make a more sizable parking area available, that would be something to think about. That would be, like I said, another discussion.
Or even a Land Trust just making a part of it. I have no idea what the land is, but create some parking there for the town to use for residents. I learned a lot tonight, listening to everybody. It was actually quite interesting. But I just didn't know where their land was and if that could be used as parking. Thank you.
All right, next we have Margaret Francour.
Thank you for, thank you for letting me speak. As a resident of, and actually, I grew up in Rhode Island. I'm used to the fact that we have restrictions to parking, and we've owned the house for over 30-some years. And I guess the key thing is that we're not restricting access to the beach. The beach is available. There's a park up the road where people can park and walk down. There's space for people to drop off people. I guess the question is, does a right-of-way have a certain number of spaces that have to be allowed? When I was part of, I spoke up when they were adding that parking, and I really wasn't for it, primarily because when it happens is because there's available parking, you have five more cars that drive down looking to see if there's an available space. Because, and so when you add three more, you're going to have, for every space, there's another car coming down the road looking. Is there a space open? So that's where you get into a lot more traffic. As far as the food trucks, they are parked on state property, and primarily, it is the ice cream truck that stays there for hours on end. And again, it does block the viewpoint, because what happens is because people are excited about getting down to the beach, they accelerate as they enter that circle. They accelerate to the right towards the Ocean Drive. They accelerate to the Green Hill Beach Club. I've had, I had four children, and they would walk across. So the thing is that I asked the town council to think about is the neighborhood, there's, there is access to the beach. You can walk there, you can ride a bike there. There's five spots there, or you can park at the park that's just up the road. Public access doesn't mean you have to have a parking space. And thank you for hearing me.
You, Margaret. Have a good evening. Next up is James Murphy. All right, James, if you see the little microphone button down on the bottom left, that is how you will unmute yourself.
Hi.
Yes, we can.
Jim and Donna Murphy were at 1054 Green Hill Beach Road, and I won't repeat any of the things some of my neighbors have said about sanitation, urination, just some of the overcrowding. What I will say, though, is that the area that's in question is a curved road, and it's, that whole area is naturally sandy. And with additional parking spaces would be added, the road narrows quite a bit. And as Margaret said, people do come around the corner, and there is people speeding or just moving quickly, and it's sandy, and I do think it's dangerous. So I won't repeat all the other things. I support wholeheartedly what Bacon's and what Carmen had said. But I do think it's a risk to safety where that road narrows to add more parking and more spaces. So thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you, Jim. Let me, before we go back to Tom Tierney, is there anybody on, watching the meeting or was listening on their phone who would like to speak who has not spoken?
Mr. President, I'd also offer up, if you'd like, the harbor management plan has been discussed a couple of times. I could have somebody from planning explain the obligations we have to CRMC and the harbor management plan as they relate to the right-of-way, if that's helpful to the council.
Council members, would you like to weigh in on that question?
Sure, Rob. I'm okay with bringing in Jamie Rabbit to have him explain that to us.
Actually, I'd suggest Brian Wagner, who's been working on the harbor management plan with CRMC.
Good.
Let's have Brian in.
Hello.
Brian.
Yeah, I just, this was brought to my attention. I have been working on an update to the harbor management plan and I just wanted to make sure the council was aware. South Kingstown as a town that issues mooring permits in coastal waters is required by law to have a harbor management plan that harbor management plan has to be approved by CRMC. CRMC's Coastal Resources Management Plan has, you know, very clear language about protecting, maintaining and enhancing public access. And as part of our harbor management plan, we are required to identify areas of public access and to tell CRMC how we are going to go about managing and protecting those points of public access. This is a designated public access point in our harbor management plan, as several people have pointed out. And I would note that in our our goals and policies and recommended actions, we expressly state that our our goals are to improve the use of public access. Wherever feasible and that as a a recommended action that we will take actions to identify areas for increased parking facilities. So actually, the proposal to make a small improvement to available parking in this area would be in keeping with the commitments that we have made in our harbor management plan to promote both of those issues in town.
All right, I appreciate that. Brian, do we have any questions for Brian while he's here with us? All right, seeing none. Go to Doral Beasley. All right, Doral, you just need to unmute yourself.
Okay. Earlier in this meeting, did you, did the council talk about the, and this is not the Green Hill thing, did you talk about sidewalks, snow removal?
That's still upcoming.
Oh, all right. Will you have will you have public comment after that?
Well, there is the designated public comment time. If it looks like there's a lot of interest right then, at that point, we may open up that item.
But normally you would want me to talk about that now or wait till after this?
Not now. Not right now. We're in a public hearing regarding the green.
Okay, all right. I will shut up. There. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Bill. All right, we have Michael Francore next.
Michael, you're back.
I'm here. I wanted to ask Brian about, you know, preparing that area for parking on the westerly side of the beach. Right now, there is no preparation there. It is people park half on the road, half on the on the beach area. That, I believe, creates more of a of a of a safety issue as well. And, you know, when you think about that area, it is wetlands. As you mentioned, the town area is very wet and I don't know about the how, you know, it's very, you know, especially after a heavy rains that area. So you're going to create some some ruts and gullies. I think they're already there. But they're going to get even worse. And, you know, if you're going to have parking in that area, you know, I think it would make sense to make site improvements, you know, of grading that gravel, pushing back bushes, you know, that people have to park there. You want to make it, you know, safe and sustainable. And the way it is right now, it is not safe and sustainable. It is a it is a mess that that in adding those three spots in that wet marshy area there is just going to make you know, your road bedding areas is going to make more erosion. And and again, also, nobody mentions about the environmental impact of of things that may be contaminants that are pollutants. Because that all drains into the Green Hill Pond area. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. All right. Any other comments from council members or from the public? Councilwoman Rose.
Could we look at, I know a lot of people are complaining about the trash there and the public safety. I'm familiar with the area. I summer at White Carpenter's. The surf is no joke there. The riptides are frequent and not something to to mess around with. Would it be possible to look into at that right of way, perhaps? Posting that there is dangerous surf there and also that there is no lifeguard on duty. And also, I'd like to take a look at if it's possible to put some kind of take in, take out trash measure there. In our work session, I inquired about putting a garbage receptacle there. I know that to do that at all the rights of way might be costly. But to do some kind of take in, take out trash plan, is that something that is a bit more feasible?
So we can make improvements to any public right of way, any public area. It's just a question of budget. It's just a question of, you know, what investments are taxpayers going to prioritize? We're happy to look at signage. Signage is a relatively inexpensive intervention. We can obviously, you know, encourage people to take their trash back out with them. That works in some places and it may work here. In terms of actually putting infrastructure, obviously, when we start talking about lifeguards, we're talking about real expense. And when we start talking about trash removal, talking about real expense.
Yeah, I just think it would be important. I know a lot of people mentioned that families are coming there, parking there to access the beach. As someone with two children, I don't think that I would be heading to a beach with, you know, dangerous surf knowing with signage that there is no lifeguard on duty. I think that a lot of people come coming from out of town might not even realize that and might not have a grasp of, you know, how that open ocean can be. So I think that's an important idea that that people with concerns have brought up.
Signage is, as I say, an easy intervention.
Yes, Councilwoman Burger.
So would this be a time to ask the chief what what his opinion of the ordinance is if we were to pass it the way it is? Or is that after we close the public hearing?
No, this would be the time to do it.
Okay. Chief, can you answer?
Well, my opinion on this is that the addition of three parking spaces certainly will not impact the police department services to the town. We go down there on a continual basis. We have parking issues there as well as many other places in town throughout the year. And we try to hit all of those spots as much as we can. To be honest with you, lots of times people do park illegally there. So those spaces that are currently that fifty foot spot is is sometimes the cars are there anyway. So we just end up ticketing them and moving on and going from there. So, you know, in terms of impact, you know, I'm at the point where, you know, certainly I don't want to see anybody get hurt. I don't want it to be any issues down there. And, you know, if if people are wanting, citizens are wanting a place to park and to access. And like I said at the beginning of this session, that's, you know, going to be an issue where there's always going to be two sides of every story, people that want access and the people that are the private owners. And like I said, we've been down there as a police department to handle those issues as well on the beach. So I mean, my own opinion is is that the additional three spots, like I said, it's not going to impact what we do. We will still respond down. We will still handle any issue that arises down there.
So my my other question would be, I guess, the Green Hill Beach manager mentioned that they're doing the rescues. So we we as a community should know how often they're providing, you know, rescue, you know, this is it's it's hard to make a decision without real data. So while initially, I I you think, oh, it's just three spots, not a big deal. Just add three more. You know, you hear people saying how much of an impact it is. And for the people who are speaking, I I I look at people, whether you're a full time resident or a year round, a summer resident, you have a right to your home and your life. And so you don't have any less clout with me or, you know, I don't serve only the people who live here year round. But I think that there clearly, there's a lot of angst about this. We need to address enforcement in a meaningful way. The food trucks, obviously, new information we didn't know. But I I think there's a lot to be thought through here before you just say, oh, it it does make sense, expand the parking because we want people to use the the water and enjoy South Kingstown. It's why we live here. But the on the other side of that coin is all of the things that they're talking about, public urination. I only can say because I I live where we are in in East Mattoonik, just a few weekends of the of Bruso, they're ruining my neighbor's lawns. So we, you know, I hear I hear all of that and I wouldn't want to be picking up dirty diapers or whatever miscellaneous other trash. I mean, I think there's, we have to figure out how to address if we're if 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 the council were to grant access, then we need to clearly address the other clear problems that are going on there. But I don't know.
Certainly, the food truck issue, that's the first I've heard of that. I don't know of any complaints that it came in with that. Certainly, that's something that we can definitely look into with enforcement and moving them along per the ordinance that already exists. So that's a new one on me. So I didn't know about that myself.
Councilwoman Berger.
So could I see that the Tom Tierney, the beach guy? Could we can we maybe him answer how many rescues and do they track that? I mean, is this something that the rec, Parks and Rec should look at? I know it's not a beach, but clearly it's functioning with some level of you know, activity that maybe is more than had been in the past. I don't know where he went.
I think maybe he's being brought in at the moment. I'm not sure. Susan is not. He did have his hand up a while ago and then he went away and then raised it again. Now he's gone. There he is. Can we bring Tom to him? All right, Tom, you are back. You just need to unmute yourself.
Thanks for having me back, guys. I would like to point out, yes, the food trucks are there daily, have been for probably four years, five years. It's been their their big hit spot. And and to that point, why would a food truck be there if there's not fifty, sixty, a hundred people on the beach? I've been there Saturdays, Sundays, big days, July fourth weekend, two hundred people on that beach. So is it a right of way or is it a beach? Huge safety concern. We probably have made, I think last year we had eight rescues. Maybe one of those rescues was one of our members. It's a two hundred member beach club. They're all long time, lifelong members of that facility, very familiar with the ocean conditions there. Very conscious of what can happen. Whereas at the right of way, it's renters. It's a known fact. I think you guys all know it, that everybody in that area is renting. People come down, they don't know what the conditions are in Green Hill, open surf, giant waves, very dangerous. I just, I can't tell you, folks. I can't even let you know. It's just a matter of time when there's going to be a giant catastrophe there, multiple person rescue or loss of life. You know, and, you know, obviously, the conditions are it's it's with that many people on the beach with no rest rest place to put refuge. It's just crazy. We're picking up diapers daily. People are trying to use our restrooms. You know, it's become a beach. You need to figure that out, council. You know, I applaud you for what you do, but I think this is an opportunity for you guys. You know, I want to open access, you know, Nate and Conrad and everybody. I'm not looking to have a fight with anybody. I want open access, but we need to consider the safety factor of it. So I have ridden to South Kingston Police Department. I have years of incident reports when there's been rescues. There's probably at least five or six or seven rescues a year. So thank you for your time. Appreciate you having me back in.
Thanks, Tom. Take one last public comment tonight and then maybe we can be ready to close this up and make a decision. David Moore. David, you're in the meeting. You just need to unmute yourself.
Got you. Thank you very much. Just very quickly, one of my neighbors just made a really terrific point. I think we should hone in on just to talk about the parking issue. So currently, the parking that's allowed, all of the cars that can park today are actually off the road. If we allow three additional parking spaces, each of those is going to be fully in the road. Which means two cars cannot pass each other on that road. You'll restrict traffic on that road, further creating a safety hazard. So again, the current parking allows for off road parking. The parkers are actually on the sand. They're on gravel. We had these three additional parking spaces. Now those parking spaces are fully on the road. Two cars cannot pass each other. I just want to make that last point. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
I would ask the chief to to comment on that.
So when I viewed that area of the three spots that are in question, there was a small shoulder on the right hand side. There was a dirt apron off of the asphalt that would allow for the, you know, passenger side tires to park off the roadway.
I would I would respectfully tell you it's directly across the street from my house and that statement is not true.
David, I have also been in that area and I can say that the chief is
Come on over.
Okay. I'm familiar with the area. So I appreciate your comment. Thank you.
That was untrue.
Okay.
Mr. President, if it's helpful to the council, we can pull up the picture.
Sure.
The, sorry, folks. So again, the area is this spot right here. This is the
We can't see that screen yet.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So, this is the shoulder area that's being discussed.
And John, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, just quickly, on GIS, I measure, which isn't, you know, accurate to the inch, but it looks like it's about twenty-seven feet of pavement there. So, the paved travel surface is pretty wide along that section of Green Hill Beach Road.
Yeah, I, I would, I would agree. There's plenty of space for two cars to pass each other. Honestly, probably having cars there would offer some type of traffic calming the area and slow people down going into the cul-de-sai. All right, do we have any more comments among the council? Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing? Councilman Kelsey?
I just have a, a question. Right now, we have a hundred and seventy-five feet of permitted parking. Is that about twelve cars? If I'm doing that three to four kind of thing, right? Yes, no?
John or Joel, you're probably best qualified to answer that.
Well, I, I would think, Rob, it would depend on, obviously, the length of the size of the cars. When I took a look at that area there, usually when people park, they tend to leave people, leave enough space in between, especially in those areas, so the cars don't get hit. So, when I looked at it, I was, I was estimating about three cars would be able to fit in that fifty-foot area. So, if you kind of times that out, you're looking at maybe a total of eight to ten, I guess, maybe fully for that area. But I, I mean, it would all depend on the size of the vehicle and, you know, how people actually distance themselves in between the vehicles.
Sure. I guess I wanted clarification because those eight or ten cars are not bringing two hundred people to that beach. Those people are coming from somewhere else, not from these parking spaces. Just thought I should mention that.
The Google image, which seems to be from a summer satellite shot, shows ten vehicles. Or eleven vehicles, I'm sorry, eleven vehicles.
All right, any other comments among council members? Any, okay, councilwoman Bergner?
I, I just, back to the chief for a sec. I'm just not familiar with how enforcement would be. Do we have, I, my only frame is URI. We have police officers on bikes and segways and foot patrols. We probably don't have bikes, right, and things like that?
We have, we do have a bike patrol that's dedicated every year. A bike patrol, they try to make passes down there every so often. They actually have to physically put the bikes on a vehicle and drive them down there, deploy the bikes out and drive around. So, we do have some type of bike patrol there. I know during the daytime, our patrol cars go down there on, on a regular basis to do traffic or, excuse me, parking enforcement down there. When cars are parked illegally, we do issue tickets.
Do you think we need more? Do you think we need, I, I mean, because I feel like some of the issues are enforcement and, you know?
Well, I, I think, you know, it, it's, we deal with the parking issues here in Green Hill, Moonstone, Mattoonik, East Mattoonik, Jerusalem. So, we have many, many areas that we deal with parking issues, especially during the summertime. And the demand is constant from people calling to say that there's illegal parking. So, it's really difficult to get down there and, and position somebody down there to strictly perform enforcement when, you know, those officers have to cover these other areas too. So, generally, in a typical patrol, it would be stop at all the areas along the way, check to see for parking issues and issue citations appropriately.
I, I guess I don't mean, when I say enforcement, I, I, I'm thinking like, do we need more community presence? Because, you know, the, you know, I think the more police officers are seen, it's, it's, that's a good deterrent for difficult unruly behavior. So, do we need to increase that? I mean, I guess we probably can't, but I mean, it seems like in all beaches, in all areas, we probably need to do that. Because I, I mean, Moonstone and things like that all have issues related to that.
I mean, certainly, having presence of a uniformed marked police car would definitely deter any type of behavior, I'd hope. The difficulty is, 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 like you had mentioned, is having somebody there all the time. And we do have to cover all these other areas. The, the south area of town is, how we sector it off is very large. And, you know, we get the calls of service overall in the town increased dramatically in the summertime. So, we're really kind of stretched thin down in those areas. You know, but we try to get down there as much as we possibly can.
I, I don't mean to open up a can of worms here, but did I hear you say that we enforce the parking in Jerusalem?
Yes, we do. We're down there with an agreement. We, we handle enforcement patrol, even though that Jerusalem is owned by Naryanset. It's part of our, of, of thing that we do, and we get down there, we patrol it, and we handle parking down there and any other criminal matters that happen to come up.
All right, just wondering. Thank you. Bergner, your hand is raised.
Yep, sorry. So, I'm just trying to understand. So, in Blackberry Hill, there is no parking on the streets. So, like, I'm just, the, the equity, you know, one neighborhood is getting more parking. We don't have, we don't allow parking in Blackberry Hill. I'm just trying to figure out, I guess, the philosophies of why we would do it in some areas and not other areas. Just if anyone can help me understand. I wasn't on the council, but I thought a couple of years ago.
With Blackberry Hill, do you mean the roads that butt up to and intersect with Cards Pond?
Yes, yes.
So, I, 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 I don't remember historically, but I think the issue was there was a lot of people that were parking there. Issues with blocking the roadway, and everyone would park there and walk across and walk over to the town beach. And that became an issue over there, and I believe that's why, and don't quote me on it, but I believe that's why an ordinance came out relative to that.
Thanks. I'm just trying, I'm just trying to, you know, one neighborhood gets X. It's, you know, and it's, this other neighborhood is getting more. And we've, you know, prohibited in many, you know, North Reed and South Reed and wherever, Brickwater, they're all different. And so, you have, I, I guess I just, I would not want to be the, the, the ten people who have called in dealing with this for ten, twelve weeks, eight, ten, twelve hours a day.
And Councilman Rose, your hand is raised.
To Councilwoman Bergner's point, there are, I believe, at least two public rights of way coming from Blackberry Hill. And I would love for it to be looked at further as to how we can add parking on Cards Pond Road to access those public rights of way. Again, it needs to be fair. There are public rights of way there, and people need access there as well. So, we should definitely be looking at how to create access there.
Thank you. So, any further points about this particular proposed? If not, do I hear a motion to close? Councilwoman Bergner?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Jess Rose, I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Bergner, second by Councilwoman Rose. Any further discussion on this point? Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. I hear a motion eight B.
Rory McEntee, I'll just say something quick before I make the motion. I think it's one of the council's agenda to increase people's access to these right-of-ways. And I think one of the ways by doing that, and this is instance in particular, is to increase the parking. Because by and effect, if we don't allow people a place to park, there is really no way they can access the beach other than parking a distance away and walking, which creates troubling issues as it relates to accessing that right-of-way. So, in staying in line with our goals, I think it's important that we do increase the parking and do approve this ordinance. We're not talking about a big change here. We're only talking about fifty feet further of parking, which equates to three cars. And it sounds like people are already parking there. But I'll make a motion to approve eight B.
Jess Rose, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion from Councilman McEntee, second from Councilman Rose. Any discussion on this motion? Councilwoman Bergner and Councilwoman Rose, your hand is raised. I don't know if you, a council, Berg.
I just noticed that this ordinance would go into effect immediately. And I, I, I hear, I just listening to what the people are saying, and, you know, they're asking for, you know, to pay attention, maybe come back down in June or July. I mean, there's some, there's some, I'm reluctant to do it, not having a, a lot. I mean, or, or we need to work on the enforcement, community presence. I hate the word enforcement, but like, the, the community concerns, I mean, I don't know. So, one of two things would, I guess, can you amend it to affect, take effect July thirtieth? I mean, or do I make that motion and then?
No, I mean, Councilman McEntee could choose to amend his motion if he wanted, but I, I'm. Are you?
You can, you can propose an amendment to Councilman McEntee's motion. It would need a second to move forward. So, I, I would suggest you say I, I move to amend it by putting a, a time of July thirtieth. If, if there's a second, you'll discuss it. If there's no second, you're back to the original motion.
You want to make that motion?
I do.
We have a motion to, I mean, we didn't have a second on the original.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry. We do need a second on the original. I, I thought it was. I thought Jessica seconded it.
Yes, she did.
So, we have a motion for amendment. Do I hear a second? All right, I see no second. Back to the original motion. Is there further discussion? All right, seeing none, I guess we will have a roll call for this one.
Okay, I'm going to call you in alphabetical order, Councilwoman Bergner. You're muted.
Sorry about that. I, I, I.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Aye.
Councilman McEntee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rose. And Council President Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you, Susan. That brings us to item nine on the agenda. Review and discussion of town snow removal ordinance and sidewalk snow removal policy. And before we call on council members, Rob, I imagine you have some type of presentation?
Oh, sure. We can, you know, sort of describe what we do, what our experience has been to date and sort of put some context around it. During the work session, I noted that there are five ways for communities typically to deal with snow removal. The first is for communities to do nothing about it, no ordinance and no municipal snow removal on sidewalks. Folks learn to, to live with the fact that there is snow on sidewalks and that has consequences. The other methods are, an ordinance is quite common where the only responsibility for snow removal is responsibility put on private property owners who own property adjacent to the sidewalk. And the town doesn't do anything beyond that. If, if an individual doesn't act on, on their obligation, they can be fined, but the town does not intercede beyond issuing a fine. A third method for dealing with snow removal is a method that is used in Rochester, New York. Rochester is a community that will remove all snow from all sidewalks. They have eight hundred and seventy-eight miles of sidewalk, and they remove every snowflake that has fallen on a sidewalk if there's more than four inches. Rochester does not deploy its snow removal teams, its public snow removal teams, unless there is four inches of snow. In the snow belt, we also see two other examples of how snow gets dealt with. In Burlington, Vermont, town employees remove snow from all of the sidewalks in Burlington, Vermont. Also about eight hundred and seventy-some-odd miles of sidewalk in Burlington. And those public employees remove snow from the sidewalk only after they've completed removing snow from the streets. So, in Burlington, it's quite common for snow to be on the sidewalks for a couple of days before the municipal public works folks can get to that snow. And then the last version of how snow removal is done is sort of a hybrid. There is a local ordinance, and the municipality, in this case, St. Paul and Minneapolis, Minnesota, are our model. They're similar to what we've ended up with here in South Kingstown. They have an ordinance that requires private parties to remove snow from sidewalks adjacent to their property. And if a property owner fails to do so, then the municipality steps in, removes the snow, and bills in the form of a fine, the property owner who failed to do what they were obliged to do. That's essentially what our ordinance is designed to do. We have a couple of other permutations or elements to ours. Private parties who are unable to remove snow from their sidewalks or the sidewalks adjacent to their property can apply for an exemption. Exemptions are given for seniority. If you're, if you're sixty-two years of age or older, you're automatically eligible for an exemption. If you are disabled or if you have an economic or family circumstance that is temporary, you can apply for a temporary waiver. If you work at, during hours that are impossible for you to resolve snow removal, you're also exempt. The idea with our ordinance is not to be fining people, not to punish people, but to find ways to encourage people and to identify properties that cannot be shoveled by the people who own the property adjacent to the sidewalk. Over the course of this winter, we have sort of adjusted our program. We found that a number of properties, particularly along Broad Rock, because Broad Rock is a route to school, it's a particularly high-interest area. Property owners on Broad Rock technically are adjacent to that sidewalk on Broad Rock. However, it really isn't well-connected to those properties. A number of people pointed out that in order to get to the sidewalk on Broad Rock, they'd have to trudge through their backyards, climb over a stone wall, and begin shoveling in the middle of a, a sidewalk. That's, that's an unusual circumstance, and it's a condition that we've taken note of and have begun removing the snow on that portion of Broad Rock ourselves. We do go back through wherever snow is in a, on a path or a sidewalk is on a path to a school. And we will widen the, the path, even if a property owner has made a first cut. We will go through and widen the path with our equipment. We're trying to make sure that access points to schools are, are well-cleared. We suffer from manpower problems, and we have had some challenges. And that's part of the reason the, the ordinance was put in place because for years, this has been a challenge. We've basically moved from the Burlington, Vermont approach, at least with regard to the loop, which was get to it after you do the, after you do the street plowing, which which was get to it after you do the, after you do the street plowing, which can take a couple of days. We've moved from that environment to the Minneapolis-St. Paul approach, which is put the onus to the extent that it can be reasonably put on property owners with the capacity to deal with the snow and follow up. We have not yet fined. We have the, in the ordinance, the authority to do what Minneapolis and St. Paul do. We could fine, we have not fined, but we have been following up and removing the snow from those locations where private property owners have not. I think that's a fair summary and I know we're getting late in the night, so I just want to end it there and answer any questions. John Shock and Chief Yuing Chow can also answer questions about our enforcement and constraints on the operation system.
Great. Thanks, Rob. And so, yeah, we'll have a little open discussion. People have particular ideas about how to improve what we are doing. Those would be welcome. Councilwoman Rose, your hand is up.
Um, so I, I don't have the perfect answer as to how to rectify this situation and how to make it safe for people to travel. You know, immediately following snowstorms here, but I wanted to share why I'm so passionate about this. Two years ago, a coworker of mine lost her son to a hit and run. Her son was struck while he was walking on a road because sidewalk was not cleared by an off-duty plow. So to say that I'm passionate about this is an understatement. This town would be absolutely rocked if something like that were to happen here. That being said, I, I want to congratulate the Department of Public Works and the residents after this past storm. It snowed for thirty-seven hours. I've not seen a storm like that in probably forever where it snowed for thirty-seven hours. And when I went out the next day and I drove around and I ran my errands, almost every sidewalk near a school was plowed or cleared or almost down to bare pavement. So I don't know what happened this time around, but I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart to everybody who worked during this storm. My husband plows. He was out for thirty-plus hours. It's not easy. And thank you, thank you, thank you. I was amazed at the difference between this storm and last. And I hope that we can keep that up. Thank you to everyone who did their part to make that happen.
And Councilwoman Bergner?
So I think my thoughts about this ordinance are that there's, the public doesn't understand what the ordinance is supposed to do and what it's not supposed to do. So, you know, just reading it, within twelve hours of the snow stopping, you're supposed to shovel. Well, if the storm ends at, at eleven o'clock at night, no one's going out to shovel. You know, it's dark, la, 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 we're not doing that. So it might be a question of the timing. It might be a question of people don't know, you know, who's supposed to shovel. If, if you're out of town, if, if you're away, you know, there's all of those things. There's a lot of misunderstanding. People are pointing out banks, we're not doing the right job. I mean, it's not, we, we haven't done the right job by the public. There's a lot of misunderstanding. And then the other piece of it is other sidewalks don't ever get shoveled. So the, the la, not this storm, this, this last storm was light and fluffy. The storm before was heavier and gross, but, you know, residents in East Mattoonick, you know, spoke to me about there's, the sidewalks never got plowed, so they're walking in the street around Russo. You know, they, 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 they didn't walk and then because of the, so, you know, we're not, the town is not doing their part. I want the schools and that school zone to be prioritized, but the rest of the community has to be able to walk on any other sidewalk. You're not going to walk down Sukkatah Road in the middle of the road. So we, we just need to, one, education and then two, figure out how we're going to address other areas. Because the town as a property owner never did its job there.
So a, a couple of thoughts about that. I think you're right that there's still confusion. The ordinance was passed a couple of years ago, but we really only had two or three storms where it has come into play. Last year, there really wasn't any opportunity for folks to sort of come in contact with the, the ordinance because we just didn't have snow. So I do think that what we've seen over the course of this winter is a steady improvement. I think you're also right, Councilwoman Bergner, that the character of the snow matters. Heavy snow is, is harder to move and lighter snow is easier to move. But I think that there's clearly over the three major events that we've seen, been a steady improvement. There's been more snow removal on sidewalks each storm. So I take some, some hope in that. I think that part of the confusion is that, you know, you can't write an ordinance that resolves all possibilities, all permutations of snow or snow and ice events. It's very hard to nail this down to a science. So one of the things that we've got to make sure the public understands is what is expected always in the law. Regardless of what the, the, the letter of the law is, is what's reasonable, what's possible under the circumstances. Obviously, no one expects people to be out at three o'clock in the morning shoveling snow so they don't get a ticket at five o'clock in the morning. We're not going to do that. That's just, that's not reasonable. What is reasonable is at your earliest convenience, after the secession of the snow, you've got, you've got the twelve hours. That's a reasonable approach to snow removal. Could we remove the time altogether and say, in a reasonable period of time after? We could. Could we make it twenty-four hours? We could. But then, you know, do we change the nature of what's reasonable by doing that? If we say in a reasonable period of time, the, the approach that people would take would be different. Some would say, I think three days is reasonable. Some would say three hours is the only reasonable thing. So I, I don't know that, that those sorts of letter of the law concerns in this case are going to be easily resolved, except by people coming to understand that we're not out there with a, you know, with a magnifying glass looking at how wide the swath is that they've cut in the sidewalk. There is no width. We're not requiring people to be twenty-four inches. If you've got a snow shovel and you make your pass, that complies with the ordinance. Is that the best we can do? No, we could, we could put in the ordinance that it must be wide enough for a wheelchair. We haven't done that. There are lots of things that we could do that would make the ordinance better from some people's perspective and more onerous or worse from other people's perspective. Ultimately, we've just got to get used to the idea that we all have to lend a hand and we have to improve the walking environment for everybody in town together. I think your point on the neighborhoods is a particularly important point as well. The town has never shoveled sidewalks in Teft Hill or in the neighborhoods. It's never done that. And we've previously never had an ordinance that required anyone else to. We've been very, I'll say it, reluctant to come down with a heavy hammer on neighborhoods that have historically dealt with snow the way that they deal with snow. We have not wanted to come into Teft Hill and start ticketing everybody on Teft Hill for failure to clear their sidewalk. Where there is no particular, and to Councilwoman Rose's point, walking in the road is dangerous in a snowstorm or after a snowstorm everywhere. Traffic counts are different in East Mattoonick than they are on one oh eight, near Dale Carlia corner. The, the risk is, is much greater in the densely developed areas of town. If it is the council's direction and we want to be more aggressive in enforcement, we can do that. The ordinance exists. I'd prefer to think that we can continue to just sort of see people figuring out what this is really all about and find a way to start clearing snow, even in the neighborhoods like Teft Hill and, and East Mattoonick, et cetera.
Councilwoman Bergner?
My, mine isn't, my, it is the part, the town owned, the town part was never, it's, it's, I understand what you're saying about Teft Hill. It just never got done at all.
So we should, we should, I'll, I'll make sure that Terry knows about Russo hit the park, that I, that you're, it's a valid point.
Just that, that part's a little dicey. I do agree with education and I think maybe at the beginning of the winter season, we could have an informational reminder because people come and go, people forget, things change. It's, we need a public awareness meeting at least or something. I don't know. Maybe when the app comes out, we can, you know, it can be a routine thing that happens. I don't know. But I think that needs to happen, but the park was a concern. Obviously, the priority is going to be children walking to school. I get all of that. But five or six days later, people with, that section is a little dicey. And do you know, are the schools helping sort of meet, meet in the middle and shovel towards, towards the areas?
The schools do shovel in front of all the school buildings. So in front of the high school, in front of Peastale, they have helped out when, when we ask and, and we've got a particular problem on a school route, they have helped out. But typically, they're, they're responsible or have taken responsibility for the sidewalks immediately in front of school properties.
Any other questions or sort of desires of how we should change the current policy? Okay, Rob, are you looking for anything in particular from us tonight regarding this?
I, I don't think so. We have had a couple of folks suggest that we consider outsourcing the town's portion of this. We followed up. We've talked to a number of businesses in town that do snow removal. We may come back at some point and ask the council for permission to, you know, go out and contract. We'd put an RFP out. We'll have to see what we get back. The impediments that the private sector encounters are similar to the impediments we have. Staffing issues, making sure that you've got the staff, and they have a different problem as well. A lot of the companies that do snow removal have expressed specific concern about the liability insurance costs associated with taking on shoveling public sidewalks. So we'll, we're going to noodle that around. We may in fact put a request for proposals out there or a request for bids out there and see what we get back. My suspicion is that we're probably in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty thousand dollars per snow event if we can get anyone to do the work. Now, we've got firms that have said that they would be willing to bid. We haven't seen their prices, so we don't know, you know, if willing to work is at an extraordinary price or if willing to do the work is at a reasonable price. We just don't know.
You see Greg's hand raise. I think I'll just ask folks to reserve their comments on this matter until the opportunity for public comment for everybody. And that's coming up shortly, but we need to move this agenda along at this point. Communications, item ten, ten A is a letter dated February fourth, twenty twenty-one from Laura Lee Costello. Executive Director requesting an opportunity for the Housing Authority to meet with the town council in a work session. What would we like to do with this? Councilman Mc.
How about we schedule a work session prior to a council meeting, sort of like a six PM to seven PM type of thing? As opposed to an entire night dedicated to it?
All right. I think that sounds good to me. Other folks amenable to that idea? All right. Do you want to just send them a, a list of some of our upcoming meetings and ask them those work? I do believe they have Monday meetings that oftentimes conflict with our meetings, but we can work something out, I'm sure. Do we need a motion for that or we should have a motion to do something with this?
Rory McEntee, I'll make a motion to refer the matter to the town manager to seek out, I don't know, information from them, clarifying that they can meet with us on a night of a council meeting prior to our meeting.
Jess Rose, I'll second that.
We have a motion from Councilman McEntee, second from Councilwoman Rose. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously for that discussion. Ten F, resolutions adopted February eighth, twenty twenty-one by the Charlestown Town Council in support of House bills, five thousand one hundred and thirteen, five thousand two hundred and eighty, Senate Bill one oh six relating to beverage container deposit and recycling. What would we like to do with those?
Deb Kelso motion to place ten F on file.
Rory McEntee, second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Kelso, second from Councilman McEntee. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. That brings us to ten K. Resolutions adopted February eighth, twenty twenty-one by the Central Falls City Council in support of the Civics Literacy Act and in support of legislation to reclassify misdemeanors for the protection of immigrant families are received, placed on file and we want to do these.
Deb Kelso, I'll make a motion to place this on file.
Jess Rose, I'll second.
A motion from Councilwoman Kelso, second from Councilwoman Rose. Any discussion? Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Item ten L, an email dated January thirtieth, twenty twenty-one from Patricia Gardner, tendering her resignation from the Economic Development Committee is received, placed on file.
Deb Kelso, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation and thank Patty Gardner for her many years of service.
Rory McEntee, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Kelso, second from Councilman McEntee. Any discussion? Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously as well. That brings us to item eleven, comments from interested citizens. Thank you for your patience and bearing with us. Greg Sweet, you are first in line.
How long has this, this snow ordinance been in effect? Fifty-four years? Two. This is. Two. Why was it brought in? Because I, I've been walking my dogs down Main Street for the last six years and I don't recall there being a problem with sidewalks being done, at least on the Main Street. I can't say anything about Wakefield School or any of the others.
Well, Greg, as, as somebody who was on the council at the time, a lot of the complaints were around the, not the Main Street Business District, but up closer to Dale Carlia Corner and Old Tower Hill Road. Some of those areas, people were, you know, walking in one oh eight, which was very dangerous conditions. And I think as we were discussing the development of the ordinance or the idea of it, I think it was impossible to really target that district all by itself. We needed to have like a, an ordinance that applied to the whole town. If I, I mean, this is just off the top of my head, but.
Yeah, I, I remember Dale Carlia Corner used to be horrendous. And what I believe was happening, and you may remember April, the, when the state plowed. And what I believe was happening, and you may remember April, the, when the state plowed, um, that area, they pushed the snow up onto the sidewalk up towards, at the very least CBS side. And I think they did other sites too, but CBS, I remember vividly, you know, you'd have a six foot mound certainly. So it sounds to me like, uh, the state might have caused this problem for everybody else.
Uh, there, I mean, I think there is something to that. So I do, I remember this very particularly. CBS told us, you know, we're not going to clear the sidewalk unless there's an ordinance telling us we need to do that. So that, that was one thing that we had heard from, from them specifically.
I, you know, I know you guys know how I feel about it. Um, it's just, you know, if somebody slips and falls, are you guys gonna, um, pay for our attorneys? To, to fight the, a, a possible lawsuit? Is the town gonna do that for me?
I'll let Mike speak to that.
I, the town has, um, insurance which covers all of its property and certainly the town never wants to be in a position where it is sued. Um, however, we do live in New England. We do live in a region where it snows and it's expected that individuals will respect that and know that they have to be careful. Uh, but in any event, ultimately, the town has insurance that would cover any such lawsuits, God forbid.
So, so the town's, town's policy would pay for anybody's, um, expenses, you know, them having to hire an attorney and goes for all that to defend themselves?
No, most personal injury lawyers, in fact, every personal injury lawyer that I know, and I know quite a few, they take the case on for free and then they only get paid if they win and they get a certain percentage of whatever it is that they collect for the individual. So now the individual does not have to, generally speaking, put out money to hire an attorney. But you know, we could have, be having this discussion about parking lots, about the roads, i- et cetera. It's not just limited to sidewalks.
Yeah, I agree.
Frankly, that's why there's insurance. That's why we have insurance.
But you're talking about the person doing it who slipped and fell. I'm talking about the, the property owner that has to defend themselves. There is a fee with that. Uh, if, if I hired you to represent me to fight someone that, that was suing me, I'm using me as, as an example, it can be any property owner uh, on these paths.
I have, what, what paths are you talking, i- if it's your private property, you're covered by your homeowner's insurance.
The sidewalk that's, that I'm required to shovel.
No, no, that's public property. You're, you're not re, your insurance only covers you on private property that you own. The town's insurance covers the public property.
Okay, so if I shovel the sidewalk i- in front of my place and I don't do a very good job and someone slips and falls?
They're gonna sue the town of South Kingston. They're not gonna sue you because it's not, you, you can't be sued on property you don't own. Uh, this conversation, I, we're, we're going into hypotheticals that just don't exist.
Uh, I just wanna be clear, if, if, uh, there are a lot of property owners that, um, are worried about this. Cause I've talked to them. I know Rob knows, I, I've talked to them. Um, I've also talked to contractors that could do the work.
Many communities in Rhode Island have these ordinances. Um, they're, they're very typical. Um, whereby thi- this is not unique to South Kingston. Just about every Rhode Island community has a similar ordinance where we ask businesses and property, private residents to shovel the sidewalk in front of their, their property. It's, it's, it's normal to have.
The difference here though is you're not asking, you're telling.
Well, no, that's not a difference. There, there are ordinances in place throughout the state that do exactly this.
So Mike, I, I, this is an important point and we have heard this from potential, uh, contractors to the town. The concern is that if someone takes on responsibility for shoveling a sidewalk and as, as, um, Greg has suggested, doesn't do it well. Is there any mean, i- is there any way that that person who shoveled badly could be held liable for shoveling badly even though it's town, town or state?
Not, no, not if it's a private person. I- if you hire a contractor, there's gonna be an agreement in place and that agreement's gonna require that the job be done in a workman-like manner. And if it's not done properly, yes, that contractor would be liable, but not an individual who is out there with his or her shovel or a snow blower. It, it, that liability would not exist with a private citizen. There's, there's no contractual relationship. And the ordinance doesn't create a contractual relationship. They don't, private citizens do not become subcontractors of the town of South Kingston to be shoveling snow. You know, we, we require a lot of it. Look at the zoning ordinance. It's amazing the things that we require in the zoning ordinance. You can't put your shed within so many feet of someone's property. What, what, we could just go on and on, um, but suffice it to say that private property owners, um, through the ordinance, don't become private contractors.
Well, it just sounds to me like there's been a white brush used when there was only a small brush needed. Dale Calia Corner was the problem and I know it was. And now all of Main Street and other parts of, of town are on the hook for, you, you have to shovel in front. I think it was done, I think by most property owners, it was done anyways. But to, to me, I took it as a slap in the face. You, I, we've been doing it right along. Now you're telling me you have to do it or else you're gonna get fined. I, I think that's where the problem is.
All right. Thanks, Greg. I think, I mean, hopefully you will not take it personally. I think it was actually aimed at the people who weren't doing, uh, you know, communitarian type of, of work that you.
No, a- a- and I get that, but you painted the, the scenario with a white brush. You included that whole area, the all, all of Main Street. And I, I don't see that being, being the correct way to do things.
I think we'll go to our next speaker, Caterie Collins. Caterie, you are in the meeting now. I think, oh, you just muted yourself. There you go. You should be able to speak now. We are not hearing you if you are speaking.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. Um, Caterie Collins, S K resident. Um, and I just wanna speak on behalf of the, um, snow ordinance. Um, I was a member of Healthy Places by Design for, uh, multiple years. And this was an issue that we talked about, the snow clearing, um, a lot. And like you said, Abel, it was one oh eight, the school routes, Dale Carlia, um, basically in town, uh, having the sidewalks impassable and people being out on the roads and being in very dangerous situations, including students. Um, I have many neighbors who don't have cars, so they rely on foot. Um, and I just wanna say that this year I've noticed the compliance with the ordinance has really improved with each snowstorm. Um, in December I saw a man in a wheelchair traveling out in the road, um, in front of, um, Job Lot. And, uh, we, we don't want to see elderly people traveling out in the road because they don't have a sidewalk to travel on. Um, since that time, um, I, I think the last storm, every sidewalk was cleared in front of the businesses up and down one oh eight and, um, Tower Hill Road. So I think continue on with this. Um, I'm a resident. I live on one oh eight. We shovel our sidewalks. We work full time. Um, we deal with the icy piles of the snow, um, plows and it's, it's the least we can each do to keep our neighbor safe. So thank you very much for all you do. I've been sitting through this whole meeting and, uh, I don't know how you guys do it. But thanks for your service and, uh, have a good night.
Next we have Earl Beasley.
Okay. So, so let's go back to this, the storm, not this last storm, the one before the, there was a heavy wet snow. I live in a neighborhood, but this, I'm assuming this would, uh, would occur on any, any, on any road where it has a sidewalk. So if you're, so I'm in a neighborhood where the first plow that comes down the street comes down my side of the street. So that means about sixty percent, but you know, the width of the, of the plate and the truck, about sixty percent of the snow gets thrown up on the sidewalk. On the, on the west side of Biscuit City Road all the way down. Okay. Then by the next morning, went into like about a three or four day deep freeze. So that two foot, two and a half foot pile of wet snow is now a two, two and a half foot pile of ice. Do you really expect people to go out there and, and, and clear that from a sidewalk if you were in, uh, uh, you know, an area in town where you're worried about people walking in the streets? Now I say that because the way, the way I, I read the ordinance, to me seems like there's a liability issue for property owners and here's why. You say that if in fact you don't clear it, then the town have, has the ability to find you for it. So let's say the worst case scenario, somebody's walking in the street because a property owner didn't clear the sidewalk because he, for some reason, it could be what I just talked about, how bad the snow and the ice was. Or it could be because, you know, they work the off shift or they're a single parent, you know, they just don't have the ability to do it. So somebody's walking in the street, they get hit and they get killed. Now, you say, well, don't worry about it because the town is gonna be liable. Really? I don't, I don't, I don't believe that because in, in this, you know, in, in our world of litigation nowadays, if you have an ordinance that says that you as a, you as a property owner, even though the, even though the sidewalks on town property were, was supposed to have within twelve hours cleared that sidewalk, then I'm as, I can, I can foresee someone trying to sue you. So that's part, that's one part of it. Now, they certainly, I live up in Kingston and I have, so you know, a lot of opportunities or reasons, not a lot, but not as many as used to, but I go over, uh, in, around URI, URI does an unbelievable job clearing their sidewalks, their sidewalks, all the sidewalks in URI campus and, and there are many of them and they, and it's very hilly. Those sidewalks are clear by this, by the start of, of school the next morning. Now, I've also said more than once over the last few years that we need more people in our public works department. We, we used to get our, we used to get our streets swept twice a year. Now we're lucky if we get them swept once a year. It seems as, as years ago, as years have gone by, the public works department, the number of people actually are working in that, in that, in that department per the number of residents in this town is actually declined, not, not increased. Now, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure that, that's the way I feel about it. Cause that's when, when you're, when you look about what things are done. If you have, I'm assuming that the public works department has a map in their office and probably one in this, in the police station that shows all these quote unquote, the major sidewalks, the ones that feed the schools that need to be cleaned, you know, the, the ones you were really concerned about. Um, when you have a snowstorm. So what, whether you go out and hire another company to do this for you or, or not, I think it should be the town's responsibility to do this. And, uh, uh, lastly, if you're talking about sidewalks, I, I can tell you where you can, where you can, you can put one. And unfortunately it's on state property. It's on one oh eight. It's, when you guys put the new sidewalk in front of the police department, but then you stopped it at the end of the police, I think, um, not sure if it goes up to that building that's like to the north of the police department. Maybe it goes up that far where there's like a bus stopping thing, but then it ends. So the, people like, I've seen people in motorized wheelchairs, uh, kids on foot, you know, between there and north of the ice cream shop, that little convenience store there. There needs to be a sidewalk there so they're not walking in the road. I do.
Thank you, Dora. Uh, I do believe that, uh, one of our tip projects has been to have sidewalks installed along that area of the, the road. Um, and I'm sure we'll continue to have it there. All right. Any other folks want to make comment from the public at this point? All right. Seeing them, uh, Councilman Rose, your hands up.
I just wanted to address a couple of the public comments. Um, Mr. Beasley, I, I think was referring to a state road. So I don't, is that something? I, I would love to see a sidewalk there. Is that something that is on the town or is that a state road that would take care of that, the state that would take care of a sidewalk there?
Sorry, I was not clear enough, but the, the tip that I was referring to is called the Transportation Improvement Program. It's a statewide program whereby municipalities request certain, uh, projects to be done on state roads. Uh, so we can request, for instance, sidewalks to be added to, to one oh eight or, uh, you know, an intersection to be added to a state road, uh, somewhere earlier. And every year we'll, we'll go through that process of identifying tip projects. Uh, so yeah, it is, it is the state's responsibility to do that work, but we can influence it theoretically by asking them to do it and by prioritizing those projects.
Great. I think that's, that's a great idea. Um, second, I wanted to address Mr. Sweet's comment. Um, I wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Sweet. Um, we should not have to have an ordinance telling people that they need to remove snow from their sidewalks. Um, people should just be good human beings and do that to take care of their fellow community members. Unfortunately, that is not being done specifically in areas where there is high foot traffic, where people need to walk to get to work, where children need to get, uh, safely to school. In fact, I actually even lent my personal vehicle to a parent at Peastale after the last storm for three days so that she could transport her child to school. So we need to do a little bit more than ask because people aren't doing it when we ask. I can ask my eight-year-old to go to bed all I want till I'm blue in the face without consequence. He is not going to do it. Um, I, I don't think that being punitive would ever be my first option. But we're past first options. So where are we now? And what do we do to resolve this situation? We can't have kids walking in the road to get to school. We can't have people in wheelchairs going down one oh eight. It's not acceptable. We've asked, it hasn't been done. So now we have to take action.
Thank you, Councilman Rose. Any other comments from, uh, Councilman? Uh, Councilwoman Burke?
I'm not sure when we would address the parking. We, when we did the Green Hill Beach parking, we heard about a number of issues and we didn't really have any action plans related to that. So am I waiting and talking about that at another time or am I addressing that now? Like the food trucks, the parking and the food trucks and just enforcement and community presence of the police. Are we going to have some action steps for that problem? Or we, you know, the, I, I had wanted to speak to the community members who spoke with concerns to invite them to come back and not, you know, to not let violations continue, need to be more communicative because obviously the food trucks are clearly there a lot. So, but we've, they're probably all checked out of the meeting at this point, but how, how, what apps, action steps are we taking to address the concerns raised tonight by this, by the residents?
This is Mike speaking. You have two choices. You can either add that as an agenda item and discuss it this evening. Or you can just make it an agenda item for a coming meeting.
Or, you know, what occurs to me is, you know, if there's a particular instance, it's always probably good to ask, you know, are these issues cropping up elsewhere in town? This is something that we need to deal with on a, on a townwide basis holistically. And then if that is the case, you know, suggesting having a, a work session to, to work on that particular, you know, issue. A way that we often tackle problems like that. I think in terms of, you know, enforcement at that particular spot on Green Hill Beach Road. You know, we can ask for a report from the police chief. You know, sort of detailing what their current practices are. And then we could try and give direction through the town manager about improving those practices. That would probably be the way to deal with a specific instance like that. But so I, you know, it might be worth just thinking about that, you know, is, is there a townwide issue that we need to address? And if there is, then proposing, you know, to the rest of the council that we have a work session regarding. Or just dealing with the, the agenda item on a, a town council agenda. Rob?
Yeah. Just very briefly, whenever we find out that there's a violation of an existing ordinance, we, we take action. We do something to make sure that the ordinance is not being violated. We heard about the food trucks for the first time since the ordinance was enacted. Apparently maybe even the first time ever. It sounds like they've been there for three or four years. But nobody was complaining. So, you know, if nobody's complaining, we don't know about it. Our police patrols don't necessarily know that there's a zoning ordinance and an ordinance that requires that food trucks on public property actually have a permit. We have a permitting process. They should have been getting a permit to be operating on public land. They didn't have that. That's a problem. So now going forward, we will make sure that whoever is parking a food truck on public property. If this had been Marina Park, you know, more of us would have seen it. We would have known what was, was going on. It would have been addressed. This didn't come to our attention until tonight. Next time there is a food truck on public property on Green Hill Beach Roads right of way, they will be notified. They've got to get a permit and until they do, they cannot be operating there. And that's how we deal with enforcement. Enforcement unfortunately is largely complaint driven. We, we, we rely on the citizens of, of South Kingstown to let us know when they have issues. And if people aren't complaining, we don't necessarily know about them.
Thank you. I, I just wish we had had this conversation. I didn't know how to, we pivoted right to something else. I couldn't say, well, after we voted on the parking, I couldn't figure out how to, you know, assure the residents that we would address some of these things, just like you're saying, to, to follow up and to take, you know, to empower them to speak up. So thank you. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other comments, we'll move along to the town manager's report. And it is past 11 o'clock, so I would actually request a motion to continue the meeting.
Deb Kelso, motion to continue past 11.
Rory McInnes, second.
Motion from Councilwoman Kelso, second from Councilwoman McInnes. Any discussion? Is there anyone opposed?
Me.
You wanted to speak?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm going to start to, it's very, I'm in the challenge zone now between now and midnight. It's the law of diminishing return. So I, I just, if there's other, any items, we can move to another date. I'm, you know, trying to, there's an executive session after this. So I'm concerned that we're, we're going to be over midnight at this point. So I, I don't know. I would vote no.
Let's call the roll then.
Councilwoman Bergner?
No.
Councilwoman Kelso?
Hi.
Councilman McInnes?
Hi.
Councilwoman Rose?
Hi.
Council President Collins?
Hi.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you. So Rob, I think you hear that we're getting late. So if you can.
Very quick, the only thing that I will report out on is the COVID-19 vaccine program. We have been successfully doling out the vaccine coming to South Kingstown. We've had 230 vaccines coming at us for the last couple of weeks. So far we've had just about 650, that's not the exact number, 650 persons over, over 75 vaccinated at the regional vaccination center at South Road School. We have another 230 on line to be vaccinated on Sunday night. And we have an additional 250 for over 75 year olds, South Kingstown residents for next Saturday. This is an additional distribution of COVID-19 vaccine that we secured from the state. Anyone who is over the age of 75 years of age, who has not yet been called, should let us know. They should call the senior center tomorrow and let us know that you'd like to be vaccinated on Saturday, this coming Saturday. There are 250 doses available on Saturday for persons over 75 years of age. And we only have about 60 people who have signed up for those through this mechanism. So there's still vaccine to be gotten. We will have another 230 doses for that age category on the third of March. So that's 230, 230 and 250 on Saturday. We have quite a few doses. Beyond that, I just want to point out the state has opened up vaccine centers up north in Cumberland and Providence. They have been making announcements at the end of the day or toward the end of the day when there is excess vaccine up there, surplus vaccine. People can call and can be vaccinated at those centers up north. We are now looking at the succession of operations of the regional center at South Road School, probably in about three weeks. We're probably looking at the state setting up a state site in South Kingstown, but it will not be at South Road School. It will be at a larger facility. They're still working through where that will be, but it will be in South Kingstown and likely will be in West Kingston. That is what I've got. But anyone who is over the age of 65 at this point is now eligible to be vaccinated. You can be vaccinated through the state program, through the pharmacies, Walgreens and CVS. And if we are finding that our 75 year old plus population does not fill up the appointments that I was mentioning before, 250 on Saturday, 230 on Sunday and 230 on March 3rd. Then we too in South Kingstown, while the regional center is still operating, may begin to provide vaccine to persons lower than 75 years of age. We're getting close to having completely vaccinated our 75 plus population. That's my report.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Any quick questions for Rob? Councilwoman Bergner, your hand is up. You are muted.
So not for now, but I'm at a future meeting. Could you please provide some COVID related town expenses? What, you know, what, what we've spent, do you know, to make some of the COVID improvements, Plexiglas, whatever those things are? How much money has been spent and what we have? And also we have a, maybe a snapshot of how revenue, you know, tax collection. We haven't really heard any of those things, not for now, just putting it into your bonnet for another time. Also, I had a question about the stage two app. Now that the enabling legislation is up, what do you think the timeline is and what's the status of the application?
So yes, we'll get to the expenses. We'll just report it to you in the next manager's report. We are keeping track of all our COVID expenses. We can just print out the, the report that goes to FEMA. You guys can have those numbers. The timeline for stage two, the application has been submitted. My understanding is that the school building authority typically has a preliminary approval. They, they essentially say this is going to pass mustard. It muster, it's good enough for the approval of the council on education. The approval from the school building authority typically comes in March. And then it waits until the council can, the council on education can meet. They typically meet in early May. I believe May 17th is the date of that meeting. So once you've got the SBA preliminary approval in March, and you know that the application meets all of the criteria. I don't want to say that it's a pro forma exercise for the council and education. But when I've asked people who've gone through this process before, they've told me that it, they've never seen a SBA approved council rejected application. They are tied very closely. So once you have the SBA approval in March, you could in theory go out for a referendum, knowing that your application has been approved except for the council's final, the council and education's final approvals. So anytime after March, you should be able to begin to think about scheduling a referendum for a bond question.
So more about the enabling legislation. How quickly would we hear?
Oh, we will know in all likelihood in March, but I, I don't have a, a specific report back from the, the delegate, the delegation. I haven't asked them recently about what they thought the timeline would be.
Okay. Thanks.
Very good. Any other questions for Rob? All right. That brings us to item 14 appointments. We had a couple.
Excuse me, Abel, you skipped the town solicitors report.
Yes, sir.
This will be very quick. You have a report in writing on Councilor McInnes asked at the last meeting if you could expand the board of canvases. The answer is that state law preempts our ability to do that. State law sets the term, the numbers at three full-time members and two alternates. So you're not able, you're not able to expand the, the membership.
Thank you, Mike. That brings us to item 14 appointments. We had a couple of folks for the assessment board. I will just raise the issue that we have gotten a couple worried emails from folks about the zoning board issue. So I don't know. Brad did say he would be willing to that, willing to do that, but I'll let you guys make that decision. Do I hear any motions?
So Abel, it's Mike again. Before you make the motion, you do have an ordinance that prevents the same individual from serving on two paid boards. And it just so happens that the board of assessors in the zoning board, those, those are paid position. I mean, they're small stipends, but they're not pay as in pay. It's like, I think the assessment board's $20 a meeting. I'm not sure what zoning is. My only point is that if you appoint someone to one of those boards, they would have to resign their position from the other. I just need you to know that upfront.
No, that's good. I didn't know the assessment board was a paid board.
Gene Bouchard was able to tell us that during this meeting.
Okay. And even if he's an alternate there, it's still good.
Yes, it's a problem. And Susan brought that up and there is an ordinance. It's actually the town charter. It's not even an ordinance. It's, you can't change it. It's in the town charter.
Right. Well, again, I'll leave that to my fellow council members, but I would rather have somebody appointed to that zoning board position than to the assessment board. Go on.
So on that note, I'm going to make a, put forth, I guess, a resolution to reappoint David Bowd to the assessment board of review.
I'll second that.
Motion from Councilwoman Kelso, second from Councilwoman Rose. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. What to do with Mr. Hevner?
So my suggestion is we leave it alone for this week and somebody has a discussion with Brad and said, do you really want to, you know, where do you want to go here? We could use you on the zoning board. We can always appoint him next time to the assessment board of review. It's not that we're appointing someone else in his spot. We can just hold off for two weeks. On Brad Hevena.
He did say he'd liked the zoning board of assessment. So, I mean, he fits his skillset. So he said, I thought he said, I'll think about it if the other one hadn't, hadn't thought about it. I'd have to think about it, but.
All right. So I hear a couple of different options. We can appoint Brad to where he is currently and just hope that somebody finally steps forward for the zoning board. But that position has been open for a long time at this point. We can wait. I think that that's a, you know, and see if, you know, can have a conversation with Brad, see how excited, if we can get him to be joining the zoning board. Or yeah, I don't know. Appoint him to the zoning board tonight. If I don't hear a motion, we can just go on to new business.
I make a motion to appoint Brad Hevena to the zoning board of review. Given that he did express some interest that he would be willing to do that, I would second that motion.
Can I comment on this, Abel?
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second discussion.
It didn't seem clear to me based on the interview that he was willing to commit to the zoning board of review. I don't exactly feel comfortable appointing him to that board right now. I prefer to wait till the next meeting, find out more information, see if he has interest to commit to it and then vote.
I made a mistake. I meant, I, I meant to say the other one, the one he was on. I meant reappoint him to the one he was, told you it's 11 o'clock. I turned into a different soul, but it, I, I withdraw my motion.
Throw the motion. Okay. So now would you like to make the other motion or do we want to just wait for two weeks?
I want, I want to reappoint him to the board with Gene Bouchard. I can't, I, I'm going to say the words, wrong words. So I'm.
It's the assessment board of review.
Yeah, that's it. Assessment board of review. Sorry.
Can I comment on this, Abel?
Well, you need a second though.
I don't hear a second yet. Do I hear a second? All right. We're going to wait for two weeks. We'll see what Brad has to say. And in the meantime, if anybody's out there watching and they really want to join the zoning board, please do put in an application. That brings us to new business. Item 15, resolution declaring February 22nd, 2021 is George Washington Day. In the town of South Kingstown, in commemoration of the first president's birthday, the town council hereby reaffirms its admiration for George Washington's leadership and tenacity in the pursuit of independence for the British, from the British colonies in North America. The town council. The town council restates and affirms that the town of South Kingstown is dedicated to the preservation, celebration, and reconciliation of our colonial heritage. We acknowledge Washington's success in the struggle for liberty and mark that success as one of many that have kept our nation moving toward the truest meaning of its creed. All human beings are created.
Rory McIntyre will make a motion to approve fifteen A.
Do I hear a second?
Tess Rose, I'll second.
Motion from Councilwoman McIntyre, second from Councilwoman Rose. Any discussion? Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. That brings us to fifteen C, a resolution authorizing the town manager to execute an agreement with Narragansett Electric Company, granting an electrical easement at seventeen ninety Kingstown Road, South Kingstown, further described in a memo from the Fire Alarm Superintendent to the Town Manager dated February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one, titled Grant Easement to Narragansett.
Rory McIntyre will make a motion to approve fifteen C.
Jess Rose, I'll second.
From Councilwoman McIntyre, second from Councilwoman Rose. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. That brings us to fifteen D, a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Howard Johnson of nineteen seventy-eight Kingstown Road for the purchase of one John Deere JD fifty-one hundred E utility tractor with loader in accordance with all bid specifications and amount not to exceed sixty thousand five hundred dollars, including a trade allowance of six thousand, further described in a memo from the Park Superintendent to the Town Manager.
Motion to approve fifteen D.
Second.
Motion from Councilwoman Kelso, second from Councilwoman McIntyre. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. That brings us to fifteen F, resolution authorizing an award of bid to Liberty Chevrolet of Wakefield, Massachusetts for the purchase of a twenty-twenty-one Chevrolet.
Did we skip over E?
I might have. Yes, fifteen E, a resolution authorizing the town manager execute a first lease amendment between the town of South Kingstown and Selco Partnership, doing businesses Verizon Wireless of Basking Ridge, New Jersey, for the town's Public Services Department, Victoria Lane Water Tank in accordance with terms of lease agreements as approved by the Assistant Town Solicitor, further detailed in the memo from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager.
Motion to approve fifteen E.
Motion from Councilwoman Kelso, second from Councilwoman McIntyre. Any discussion? There anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Finally, twelve F. I read it before. Do I hear a motion on this?
Motion to approve fifteen F.
Second.
Motion from Councilwoman Kelso, second from Councilwoman McIntyre. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Fifteen G is a resolution authorizing an award of contract to Zoll Medical Corporation of Chelmsford, Massachusetts for medical supplies in accordance with pricing for the Massachusetts Cooperative Purchasing Agreement, COMBIES FIR zero four through December thirty-first, first twenty-twenty-one, further described in a memo from dated February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one, from Director of EMS to the Town Manager.
Motion to approve fifteen G.
Second.
Motion from Councilwoman Kelso, second from Councilwoman Rose. Any discussion? Seeing none, that motion, is there anybody opposed? Motion carries. Fifteen H, a resolution authorizing the town manager to execute a memo of agreement with the South Kingstown Municipal Employees Association, a local of NEARI, relative to election-related overtime earned by town clerk's office staff, described in a memo from the town manager to the town council dated February seventeen.
Motion to accept fifteen H.
Second. A motion from Councilwoman Rose, second by Councilwoman McIntyre. Any discussion on this one? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Fifteen I, a resolution extending the town's declaration of emergency adopted at an emergency session on March fifteenth, twenty-twenty, subsequently renewed April thirteenth, May eleventh, June eighth, June, July thirteenth, August eleventh, September fourteenth, October thirteenth, November ninth, and December fourteenth, twenty-twenty, and then January eleventh and January twenty-fifth of this year.
Rory McIntyre will make a motion to approve fifteen I.
Well, Jess Rose, I'll second.
Councilwoman McIntyre, second from Councilwoman Rose. Discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously, and that brings us to fifteen J, a resolution adopting executive order twenty twenty dash zero nine, Tenth Amendment, relative to gathering limitations and travel restrictions, as shown on exhibit two.
Jess Rose, I'll make a motion to accept fifteen J.
Second.
By Councilwoman Rose, second by Councilwoman McIntyre. Discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously and brings us to the end of the public agenda. Item sixteen is a closed executive session. We'll need a motion to go into that.
Make a motion to move into closed executive session.
Jess, could you please read the entire motion, though? It's required.
Sure. How do I go about doing that? Do I read the the agenda item?
Yes, please read the agenda item. Thank you.
Sure. I'll make a motion to move into closed executive session to discuss the closed executive session pursuant to RIGL four-two dash four-six dash five A two to discuss and potentially vote on pending litigation in Anderson versus Wilczowski at LWC twenty thirteen dash zero zero four eight.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Rose, a second from Councilwoman Kelso. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody who stayed with us this long. We will see you at the next meeting, and the rest of you, I will see you in the other Zoom room.
And Abel, just to announce to the public that we actually will be coming back into this session to close the meeting.
Yes, if you want us to to watch that, you are welcome.
Does everybody have their Zoom link? I guess so.
I guess so.